Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, August 20th, 2025, and this regular meeting of Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Jeremy Grimm, presiding. Alto present are City Council President Devin Rule and Councilors Joe Espiro, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howarth. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility, as the presiding officer, I'm to identify law enforcement personnel serving as sergeant. For this evening's meeting, tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Coon in the back of the room. Thank you, Chief. If everyone please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For members of public in attendance, if you wish to testify during public hearings on this evening's agenda or during general public comment portions of the meeting, please be sure to complete a comment sign-up form and hand it to staff at the back of the room. For anyone who's interested in running for city elected office, there will be an election this November for three council, city council seats currently held by Councilor Spiro, Dick, and Howarth to our right here, my right. There is just a two-week window when candidates who want to be on the ballot can file with the city clerk, and that opportunity opened this week. The deadline to declare candidacy is Friday, August 29th. If you're interested in running, please visit the elections page on the city's website for more information. Next, we'll move into announcements and reports. We'll start with council, any announcements or reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rule.
Okay, so I have pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee from August 14th. Minutes were approved. I was not at this meeting due to an unforeseen circumstance. I had to be out of town. But we didn't have updates for the subcommittee reports. Looks like it was a little bit of a slow meeting. Phase two of the Division Avenue corridor improvements, gave some input on that, and we'll be working on sending that information up to staff. And then there was a discussion about the downtown bike parking survey, and Ms. Heller said she would organize and compile all the information collected and bring that for our next meeting. And then finally, there was a recommendation of amendments to the city code for sidewalk in Luffy. Mr. Stagland provided a presentation, and that was tabled for the next meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission requested that they get input on that before it kind of rises to the level of council, and that was all that happened at the meeting.
Thank you, President Rule. Any other council announcements or reports?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Trevor?
Yeah, I just want to extend our deepest gratitude to everybody involved in the efforts to contain the wildfires in our region, including many of our community members who are involved. Our thoughts go out to everybody who has been affected by it, and we're all hoping for the best possible outcome. I do want to point out that firefighting efforts include aircraft pulling water from the southern portions of Lake Ponderay, and so I want to ask for our community to help spread the word that all boaters should avoid traveling to that southern portion, say southwest of, like, Camp Bay, so that those aircraft can do their jobs. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Trevor. Any other council announcements or reports?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
If I can just add to your comment, you can drop off donations for the firefighters at Northwest Otter Body on Michigan. They are collecting, the Rotary are collecting, they want things like chapstick and eye drops and cough drops and Gatorade and water and wipes and just things, incidentals, that they don't get in the food line. And so I was down there the other day dropping off stuff, and they've already had this huge outpouring of goods. So it makes a body feel good about the community, so other people can continue to help them. Thanks for that, Kyle. That was awesome.
Any other council announcements or reports?
Mr. Mayor, from the Arts Culture and Historic Preservation Commission meeting, we met on August 12th. I was unfortunately unable to be there, and I haven't got to catch up on the meeting, so I will go off my notes. The Spring 2025 Silver Box Project updated. Hopefully, everybody's seen our public art that has been installed downtown in three different locations. Thank you to all the artists as well. They all look fantastic. We've gotten a lot of great feedback. The Big Belly Can Wrap, which is the wrap, the artistic wraps on our downtown trashcan, should be installed here sooner than later. The Street Lamp Banner Program, which we discussed a little bit before, but everybody knows the street lamps in downtown Sandpoint, and the potential for the commission to take a look at some different types of banners, depending on what things are going on downtown, or the seasonality as well, too. So I think we're really just touching and scratching the surface on that, but I think that's got great implications for the beautification and public art in our community. The Cedar Street Public Art Commission planning, Mr. Mayor, were you at the meeting and maybe could explain some of this?
Councilman Dick, I regret that I have removed myself as the staff liaison now that we have a full, generally a full staff, and I believe maybe Planner Brubaker will be somebody who's been assigned to the Arts Commission. It's not me anymore.
Well, let's do this. I think that's just about it. I will, on our next meeting, I'll come back and touch on the Cedar Street Public Art Commission planning discussion, as well as the historic walking tours have kicked off. I hope everybody's seen them around town or participated. Please send as many people over. A large group of people walking around downtown. It's been fantastic. And I think that's about it for us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman Dick. Any other council announcements or reports?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we had our Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. I was not able to attend, but it is on YouTube, and if anybody wants to watch it there on the city of Sandpoint.
Thank you, council members. Hearing no further announcements from the council or reports, I will ask, we didn't, we've had some long meetings the last two months and really trying to manage time, so we're going to, I'm trying to go to every other meeting, staff reports, but there are some updates for staff to provide council with tonight, so we'll jump into staff reports. If anyone wants to jump up, if not, I will call you, so you can either rock, paper, scissors it, or Cheryl Hughes, Central Services Director.
He's not afraid.
He is not afraid.
I'm not afraid, no. Good evening, councilors and mayor. Just a quick update for you on a couple items in Central Services. Of course, we just support the entire organization, so a lot of the other director reports, we're supporting in some way. A GPS update for you, the GPS that's going in, all of the city vehicles and equipment, they're currently being installed. It's a, it's a long process. It's a lot of work, but that is going to provide tracking for situational awareness, and will assist the supervisors and directors. The other update is for IT. We are going to be using sandpoint.com, who provided our IT services before we brought it in-house, and they're very appreciative of how well-received and welcoming staff has been, and we're really looking forward to partnering with them during this interim period. And Ben Parker, he's an IT director in the city, or the Blaine County in Haley, he is going to be the IT manager, and he starts next Thursday. So we're looking forward to having him join our team and working with sandpoint.com.
Thanks, Cheryl, and I'll just add a little bit to that before you stand for questions. Council, as you are all, I believe, aware, our former two in-house IT employees took the courageous step to start their own consulting company, and as a result, we put out for hire that position. We, as Cheryl mentioned, we were able to secure a very qualified person, Mr. Parker, who'll be joining us. But what we're really looking at is trying to, maybe with sandpoint.com coming in, looking at a third party to give us some of that efficiency perspective that came up over the budget hearing, to see what is absolutely essential for IT in-house versus cloud and contract provision. So look forward to updating you as we get rolling with all that, and hopefully have some cost savings and efficiencies. Any questions for Cheryl at this time?
Great.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Have a great evening.
Holly Ellis, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. An update for you. Brandon Stagland, our city engineer, is no longer with us. He moved to Spokane. H and M Engineering is our new consultant engineer. And then just a quick update on our culvert. It is ordered. Unfortunately, it's about nine to 12 weeks out, so we're looking at October, November construction, but construction is going to happen this year, and we continue to thank the community for their patience while we work on that emergency repair project. So they've got to build the pipe and then ship it here. So we're about nine to 12 weeks out, but I'll keep you updated as soon as we hear a definitive date and some more definitive contract times. What that does mean is mid-October is when you'll see the contractor move to the site, and then our target is to have that project wrapped up by mid-October before our asphalt plants shut down.
Any questions for Holly?
Holly, quick question. Can you give us an update on Boyer? I saw that it was closed this afternoon. Can you just give us an update of what's happening there?
Yes, absolutely. So we have a sewer main project that's in the alley of Boyer. That contractor had to come back and do a significant amount of rework. Unfortunately, part of that rework involved getting out into Boyer. That was a one-day effort. All of that work should be done today, and the asphalt will be back tomorrow, so we shouldn't see rock beyond tonight. So that patch will be buttoned up tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
And council members, I'll just add that Holly and our street supervisor Wes have been working hard to keep the dura-patcher out there and rolling. They primarily have been focused on Great Northern Road, but over the next few weeks, you will see loose gravel with oil or tack all throughout town. They started today, I believe, on Sixth and maybe Pine, an intersection, but you'll start to see patches and pothole filling for as long as the weather stays warm. So they, if you see the gravel, it's not there forever. They let it sit, and they come back and sweep it. So those will be temporary gravel patches that you see.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Council President.
And I've had a couple members of the public wondering about the Olive Street, if the leaks have ever been found, or where that is.
We will need to contract with, our crews have done a temporary patch and grouting effort. That main line needs to have a more holistic rehab effort, so we're working with our crews to engage an engineer to design trenchless technology lining, to line that sewer main and repair the entire sewer main. That will take an engineering design effort and then engaging a contractor through a solicitation process.
Any other questions for Holly? Thanks. We'll see you again later tonight, Holly.
Thank you.
Director Welker, planning and community development.
Good evening, council. Good to see you. I know your email inbox has been getting bombarded in the last few days, so I'm going to address that in a moment. First, I wanted to, actually, I saw a friendly face in the crowd tonight. Matt Loem is here. He was the inspiration for our Paw Patrol Off Leash Dog program at City Beach. I don't think that's why he's here, but did you all receive an email about that dogs, or at geese at City Beach this morning as well?
I did.
We received, for the public, this was one of the best emails I've shown up to work to. A resident who was seasonal and was back in town after a couple months away, and was emailing city council to say, what happened to the geese at City Beach? Did we embark on another extermination program? Because when I left, they were all here, and now I'm back in town, and there are no geese, and there's no goose poop. What did you do to them? Well, we did what Matt Loem suggested last year, which is we rolled out a dog, off-leash dog program, which now has 18 registered dog handlers that, we've actually set up a shared calendar so they can go on and schedule their visits to the beach, and it's been noticeable. Myself, I haven't seen a goose there in several weeks, and in fact, the interior of the park seems to be relatively goose poop free. So Matt, thanks again for your inspiration. That program is going really well.
You're running for Citizen of the Year Award.
And thanks to all our dog handlers who have been super responsible with that program as well. Also seen some of our downtown business owner friends here reminding me that we do have a special meeting on our parking management plan that we have sent mail invitations to about 114 downtown business owners. That is on September 8th at 8:30 AM at the Marigold Bistro. I know Sheri attended a recent one with the Downtown Business Association, but we are in the midst of outreach to downtown businesses about our downtown parking management plan to communicate the intent of that plan, to introduce some of the possible technologies we might be exploring, but overall, just to get the support and buy-in from our downtown business community, because they're going to be our greatest allies in managing our parking, because it's really about driving more customers to their stores, their businesses, their restaurants. So I just wanted to put that on your radar. Justin, I'm sure you'll be there. Joel, you're invited as well as a downtown business owner, September 8th at 8:30 AM. Okay, let's get to the hot political issue of the week, which is pickleball.
Can I interrupt for just one second to stay on a little bit of subject? I just also want to give a shout out to the staff down at City Beach who rake up goose poop.
Sure. Yeah, we've started doing that.
Three times a week, I think they do. They do a great job. I'm just saying, they're part of that.
Yeah, it's been a real lot this year to clean up the beach. Okay, so I think you've received around 10 or 11 emails about the new private court reservation fees for the JER Sports Center. I've read every one of those. I've reached out to the Panhandle Pickleball Club President, and I want to just put forth what we are doing, and I've handed out to you the hot-off-the-press private court reservation policy for the James Russell Sports Center. So I encourage you to read that. I do want to just emphasize that we are not dramatically increasing private court reservation fees. In fact, there's been no change in our fee schedule from the current $20 per court per hour. The new fee schedule also has court reservation fees of $20 per court per hour for local tennis and pickleball groups. We are proposing a different approach to how we manage use of the facility during those private court reservation times by members and non-members of the sports center. So please read through that policy. Let me know if you have any questions. The goal here is to come up with a solution, a policy solution that allows our two local nonprofit groups, the Panhandle Pickleball Club and the STA, to reserve that facility at a reasonable rate, but also to not create an incentive structure where people pay their annual dues to the local tennis or pickleball club in lieu of paying for a JER membership. And that's what we've seen in the last few months, is that they're reserving the whole facility, and then lots of people who aren't JER members are coming in and playing for free. That's not sustainable for the city. We will not be able to keep this place open for tennis and pickleball if we don't have membership at the sports center. So this fee proposal, or sorry, this policy proposal that I'm working on with Ryan, is to close a loophole that has allowed dozens of people to use the facility without paying for it. It's important, of course, because we have, as you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars of overhead costs to operate that facility, and we are doing so well right now compared to a few months ago with our use. Our programs have been absolutely sold out all summer, and we are rolling out new software tomorrow, which is going to transform the user experience at the sports center. We're going to, over the next 30 days, are going to be transitioning all of our current members onto the new software platform, so there will be about a month transition period. But another date to add to your calendar is October 4th. We're going to have our grand opening and ribbon cutting at the playground and splash pad on October 4th. There probably will not be a picnic shelter vertical by that point, but there will be a concrete pad in place, and the picnic shelter will be following shortly thereafter. We're waiting on engineering on the picnic shelter right now. So that's all I have. Please read that policy. Reach out if you have questions. Respond to those emails from those pickleball club members. Let them know that we're listening. We're trying to come up with a solution that achieves the objectives of both the city and the local clubs. Any questions?
Thank you, Director Welker. Any questions for Director Welker?
Mr. Mayor?
I heard, oh, go ahead, Legal.
Intend to restate the fee-related information during the public hearing process, because council cannot rely on anything that you just stated regarding the fees. It will need to be part of that public record.
Sure. If you say so. Thank you, Fonda.
Councilman Howard?
Nope, I'm good.
You're good? Any other council questions for Director Welker?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Chief Gilchrist, do you want to give us, sorry, Fire Chief Gavin? Give us an update. I know we have some assets supporting the efforts down at the Sunset Fire, and anything else fire-related?
Good evening, council. Yeah, so just want to give you guys a quick update as of this morning on kind of what's going on with the fire over in Sagal Sunset, down to Latchee, down that direction. So currently, the fire, they're actually doing another update right now, so it'll probably be posted before the meeting ends tonight. But as of this morning, the cause of the fire is still under investigation. It is at 3,208 acres and has a containment area of 4%, and there are 546 personnel total assigned to this fire. Hotshot crews and the Hell Attack crews, along with the aerial assets, have been working basically the northernmost flank and the northwestern flank of that fire. That's the part that's closest to the Tullachie area. That's the next place that they're trying to pinch that off and get those crews in there, so they can kind of make a stop on that. They were using the weather yesterday and today as a big boost, because we had kind of a lull in the weather, but tomorrow it's going to get hotter again. The winds are going to kick back up again, so we're going to see kind of where it sits at that point. Hoping to see what they have tonight on their update. There was a lot of, I'm not going to say confusion, but there was a lot of multiple thing, multiple information was being handed out about evacuations from different sites. So we want to direct everyone to go to bonnerso.org to download those links. Those are the most updated maps for evacuation zones and, you know, no-go zones, things like that, which brought up a question about, and our department head did a meeting this morning, brought up a question about what would happen if we had to evacuate in the city of Sandpoint? How would we do it? How would we go about it? So I just want to kind of touch on that at like a high level. We would use basically the same, the same exact platform or program that's used in wildfires, the Ready, Set, Go program. Just an example, when that fire broke out, it basically went from five acres to 100 acres in about an hour. So it was moving pretty quick. So we identified with IDL and myself identified which areas of Black Tail Road needed to be in a go status. We put them in a status, then we kind of readjusted it, and then what you get from that is a quarter mile past that, past that end, the end of the go zone is going to be the set zone, and then an additional quarter mile past the set zone would be, would encompass the, you know, the ready zone. So just to keep it simple, and so everybody doesn't have to remember three or four different slogans and sayings and things of how to do it, we just stick with the Ready, Set, Go program. And for a group of agencies that have never practiced that on a large-scale incident, or large-scale practice, we've done smaller ones, done a lot of tabletops. That was probably the smoothest evacuation, just from a go standpoint, that I've seen. It works really well. I know we're going to have a big after-action review and, you know, lessons learned. What can we do better? What, you know, things that went well, things that didn't go well, that kind of stuff. So while we're en route to the incident, that's when we begin our initial assessment of the incident. We base it off the information that comes over the, you know, the dispatch for the channel, dispatch channel for the incident. We also gain information by our pre-plans that we have already been out in the community and done, and, you know, inspections and things like that. And once we arrive on scene, we are in a continuous mode of upgrading that assessment. It's just a constant thing, because the incident can change. It can scale up or scale down. There is not really a one-size-fits-all evacuation for the city, or really for anywhere. We base that on a lot of different things. We base it on incident type. We base it on the size of the incident, the location, time of day, weather, and also the time of year is particularly important, because that's when schools may be in session, out of session. How do you deal with that? It, there's also times where, like in a hazmat situation, stuff like that, where we use a shelter in place. We don't evacuate at all. It just really comes down to the incident commander or the unified command that's running the incident. What's going to be the safest and most effective way to keep our residents safe? Is it going to be, do we do a small area? Do we have to, you know, go into a grid and say the northeast section? And that's where we pull out the maps and kind of do that stuff. So I'm available anytime you guys want to talk about that stuff. It's not, you know, no big deal, but, you know, we got, we got that. We're supporting that with our fire boat, but, you know, we're also still doing the day-to-day stuff, too. So any questions you guys have?
Chief, I have a question. We have our, that you worked on our Emergency Response Action Plan and our Incident Command sort of location. Under what circumstances of an emergency or a fire or something like that, would you not be the incident commander? Would you give that control up either to the county or to some other entity?
In the city of Sandpoint, it's going to be me.
Good.
It's not, you know, even if I got to like comeback kind of a thing, it's just part of it. Our officers are very well-trained to do what they do. I have no problem going home and sleeping at night, but they know that I'm just one tone and one phone call away from coming back, so.
Excellent.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
Thank you for sharing. I had talked to Chief Coon earlier because of concern in the community. Nobody has a clue of what would happen, so I appreciate you sharing that. I think a lot of people are worried about routes, and I don't know if that's something, at some point, we can, not tonight, maybe, but if a route is closed, everybody's trying to go across a bridge, or everybody's can't go across the bridge, and they're all trying to go west. That's the kind of confusion I think that the community has right now, and out of the city, too. The county is like, is, are there routes planned? And like I said, you don't have to do that now, but if you could think about that.
Well, I can say that it's not, there's not a, we're lucky, because we have multiple ways to get in and out, where some, sometimes when you have these things, there's one way in and one way out, and that's, that's never a good, never a good thing to have. So when we would do an evacuation, we would post it, if we're doing this area, we want you to evacuate, but we want you to evacuate to, say, the north and the east. Don't evacuate south, because that's where, you know, that's where the incident is, and we don't want you to get caught up in that. We would have that stuff blocked off, and, you know, hopefully all the signs drop by then.
At the time, at the time of the event, because there's a lot of different roads that could be closed for certain people, and they're all like, what would we do?
Right.
It's a good time to think about it.
Councilwoman Duquette, just, just a little more detail. So thanks to the chief and Public Works and Police, we have a trailer now that is pre-positioned with road closure barriers and other needed supplies. We've got radios where we can communicate to Public Works and others, and we're still working on maps and other things, both hard copies, and we obviously have the digital copies. But yeah, we can, we can do a public-facing sort of, I guess, informational sheet, so folks understand that we do have plans and we do have.
It'd be comforting, I think.
Yeah, a process.
Thanks.
We just, we found out that during this incident already, that having the information in multiple different places, they weren't all getting updated at the same time, so we just bring it to bear at one site and let it go. I did leave some of the Ready, Set, Go flyers back in the back. Went over, ran over to EMD and picked some of those up. So if you wanted to grab one of those and just take it with you, or, you know, pass it out, we're going to make it available for PDF.
I wonder if it could be on the city website for people to see. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Council President.
My comment is, if you're signed up for the NICSIL alerts, that it actually gives you a direct link to that piece of paper with all the Ready, Set, Go. You didn't mention the NICSILs, but.
Yeah, and matter of fact, the NICSIL is even on here. But yeah, it's a huge, huge resource for us. That is, that's the first, first thing that comes out from the dispatch center. We will post up and say we need a NICSIL alert for, for this, and we were, we were using it the first day of that fire, for sure. Yeah.
Yeah, and council, it's just a great reminder that we are surrounded by a very volatile timber forest, and, you know, I don't think it's a matter of if, but when. We are faced with a fire coming from the west to the north, from the watershed, and it's, it's good to be prepared. So we've got a plan in place and continue to refine that. Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Corey, you have anything to add? No, Sarah's good. Any questions for any other department heads at this time? Corey, you have anything to add? No, Sarah's good. Any questions for any other department heads at this time? Great. Next, we'll proceed with the general public comment portion of the meeting. If you wish to speak and haven't yet completed a sign-up form, please do so and hand it to staff members at the back of the room. The purpose of general comment time is to allow members of the public in attendance to speak to the mayor and council regarding items included on this evening's agenda under the consent calendar or older, not a hearing. For purposes of general public forum, you're also welcome to comment on any topic pertinent to the business of the city that's not included on the agenda and not anticipated or scheduled for future public hearings. Please note that council cannot take any testimony on a planning or land use related matter outside of an official public hearing. I'd like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy in public meeting decorum. The rules are posted outside the chamber's entry. In summary, I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be disorderly or disruptive, no calling out, clapping or holding up signs. Public comment time is for comments only, no questions or debate. You're welcome to contact me during regular business hours if you have any questions or concerns. This is the only general public comment time that will be offered this evening. Those attending remotely who wish to speak may raise their hand on Zoom at this time. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in the city of Sandpoint Limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. And with that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question for some folks who have signed up to speak for Sherri and Stacy and Matt. Were you wanting to speak on item twelve on the agenda? Or were you wanting to speak in general regarding the regarding parking downtown? So you you came to speak in general on parking, yeah, okay. You weren't, you didn't specifically come to speak on that item. Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sherri Meekins.
Speakings.
Well, thank you very much for having me, council members and Mayor Graham and also the city employees. So we had a downtown, oh, I'm gonna represent the Downtown Business Association tonight, and I am the president of the Downtown Business Association, which is compiled of forty local businesses. So we had a wonderful meeting where Mayor Graham joined us last week along with Director Welker. And that proposed parking plan was brought to our attention and just kind of the intention of the the parking plan and the direction that it's gonna take downtown Sandpoint. So I'm just here as a messenger tonight. So after our our downtown businesses were able to hear the information and and kind of understand what the the parking plan would be, the response was, I mean, I I feel like it was not positive. They they didn't want to see parking on First, Second, Cedar, Main Church. And you know, there, when I hear those sorts of things, I'm like, what's the solution? You know, we can go and we can save, maybe we don't agree with it, but we need to bring a solution to this. And so I wanted to start quickly just state the the delicate nature of business downtown Sandpoint, which I've never done this to this group before, but I think we have a few business owners sitting in city council, so I know that they'll understand this as well. We have twelve months in the year, and well, let me go back one step. So I represent three different businesses myself. So I own, well, I operate a children's charity, Creations for Sandpoint, Carousel Emporium, which is a retail women's store, and then Sandpoint Toys. So three very different businesses, and I've been, I've been the owner of those for fifteen years. So I have a broad understanding from different businesses. I don't own a restaurant, but I do talk to Justin often, just kind of like how the wave works through the city of Sandpoint. So when our tourism comes into town, what does that look like? When there is no tourism in town, what does that look like for retailers? We all kind of feel the same wave. And so that wave being an influx of people. And so what do we do when the influx of people aren't in our city? So it's it's different during those times. So that being said, as a retailer downtown, we see four months of really strong business and then eight months of not super strong business. So we really, really depend on our our local community. And it's great when the tourists are here, but when they're not here, it's just our locals. Well, I think we all know locals do not want to pay for parking. I I'm sure that has been in everybody's conversation in this room and through town. So it's just a delicate nature, and I just, I want to bring that to everybody's attention, just to think about that for a moment. So as we increase, when when our town population increases and our local tourism is here, we're able to hire lots of people. We're able to pay them a fair wage, we're able to give them opportunity. So we give jobs to our local, our teenagers, our people that are retired, moms, dads. I mean, there are so many different people, so I just want to clearly state that. And without, when we disrupt this delicate balance, we're we're gonna have to let some people go. And I know that we're gonna have a huge pushback from our community, so we've tried different things in the past. One being the one percent for the football stadium. We had a lot of feedback from our local community as retailers when we were collecting that one percent. It was hard. It was very.
I just want the public to know I'm letting you go over your three minutes because you're representing a broad group, the DSBA or Downtown Business Group.
I don't think I'm good at three minutes. Thank you. So, yeah, so we had, we had very negative feedback for, you know, a good four or five months when that was, when that was implemented. But what people started to see during that time, we were collecting the sales tax and it mainly came from tourism. So retailers, what the data that we collect, collect, we probably have twenty percent of our yearly revenue comes from our local population and eighty percent comes from our local tourism. That's the wave. And so it it's, like I said, it's very delicate. So if we add a parking meter downtown, if we get any flag from any locals, if anyone in Sully Valley hears that we're gonna have a parking meter, it's just gonna be so hard to get people to return or to be downtown, to stay downtown, to come and try downtown. So, and I I appreciate Director Welker's presentation and the research that he put into this. And I think everybody that sat in that meeting was so impressed with the amount of research that has gone into the parking plan. I think the downtown retailers are, they're, what they're asking is they would like an opportunity to at least have a say and maybe or some brainstorming and what could be done for parking downtown and just truly how it can affect us. And one more thing, I just want to go back to like what they've been through in the past ten years. So we had our our city streets torn up, we had to, right? We needed new city streets, we needed sewer systems. It was inevitable, we had to do it. That was a decrease of thirty percent in retail business across the board. So if you put that equation together where you have four months of strong business and eight months where it's not so strong, and then we have a thirty percent deflation because of improvements downtown, that's hard to keep a small business afloat. And then we had COVID, so that was really difficult on our our retailers as well. So those years were really difficult to navigate through. And and now is a different, is a different story. So we have a little bit of rest right now, and I think, I I mean, I'm not thinking, I'm saying our our general consensus from the downtown business group is we would love some rest, but we want to be a part of the solution. We we want to participate, we understand that downtown is expensive and we want to see new roads, new sidewalks, flower baskets. We want to be a part of it and we do want to contribute, and there's got to be a way to do it. But we don't think the parking meters are the best idea. And we have one small solution, so that would be to reinstate that one percent sales tax, bring that back. We're raising the money for downtown, we are the downtown. We collect that money and then it's, that money is used, as I understood from the presentation, that maybe the parking meters might bring seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue into the downtown each single year. I think we could get more with one percent. The the community's already been shocked by the one percent and we've managed to, you know, we managed to be successful in the one percent. So we we did want to bring a solution tonight and we would love to have more conversations or maybe even a brainstorming session. So we'd just like you to hear our hearts and what we go through downtown and that we'd like to be a part of what's happening here.
Thank you, Sherri, for your comments and you will be a part. I know Director Welker is going to engage, is engaging you and look forward to your participation in solutions that you can suggest. And I'm also a small business owner downtown, so I fully understand the dynamics of downtown for sure. So thanks for sharing your comments.
Thank you for the extra time. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have Stacy Mueller.
Hey, Stacy.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Sherri did a really good job sharing one of the reasons why we're here. I am the the general manager of the Cedar Street Bridge, represent twenty-four tenants, and each one of those tenants has probably about one to two employees minimal. So they're all looking for parking themselves. And so the, just so you know, a small percentage of parking they're looking at is forty-eight parking spots. So that's hard just for our employees and the business owners themselves. And then we have all the people that want to come to the Cedar Street Bridge that have to find parking and then get all the way back to the back of the bridge because they have those little kids, you know? So parking has always been an issue for the bridge. I think we all know that. So I wanted to give some feedback and I want to give a solution as well. It was on July fourth that I just think the town went crazy. I think it went in front of the Daily Bee, a little bit of the implementation of the parking. That's kind of where I heard it that weekend from the public. And we were extremely busy and it just seemed to be the local talk, talk of the town. And so I was listening and hearing all the feedback. I think most of the locals just don't, I'm just gonna be there honestly, feel like this parking plan, this is just how it's being communicated, has been already decided, they haven't had so much feedback. They're they're really up in arms about it. And and that was overall, all day, all day. I had, I'm not coming back to to downtown to go shopping. So I hear that and my heart goes sink, okay? Because I've been the manager now for a year and a half. And there, you you came to the bridge, I've been working Cecil C for twenty-four seven. People know, I practically live at the bridge to try to resurrect that bridge and to bring business downtown and to help all these local businesses, and they, it has not been an easy year for them as well. And so when you add that people, and I've worked a whole year and a half to overcome people not wanting to come into the bridge. All the locals said, I'm not coming in, I'm not coming in. So for a whole year and a half, we've been trying to win them back into the downtown and to the bridge. So when I, when I heard this, I'm like, oh, my gosh, you know, I've already been working a year and a half just to try to get them in the doors of the bridge and to see, hey, we're trying to do something that's good for the community and we're trying to offer, I mean, my whole job as as the manager has been trying to make that bridge a local hangout. It's for the locals, not the tourists, and make that a place where we can all connect and gather and enjoy. And so to hear that, it was very disheartening for the tenants to hear that. That just brought the, you know, the level of their hearts down too, because every day they're trying to make a dollar right now because the economy is a little bit tight. So I feel like there's a marketing issue that needs to be addressed on the percent, the persona or the perception of what the locals are are receiving. And I think that the downtown, and I would like to offer to volunteer myself to help market the plan a little bit better so that we can show the town that we're trying to, in the best interest of all of us, make this community work and function. We know we need to gather more revenue. I think the solution for the one tax is a good solution. I think that the meter, the meters, I hear that, it it turns us into a not friendly town, into one of the other touristy towns. And there's something very charming about Sandpoint that's very relaxing, back to the good old days of what the values that, you know, of of old are and, you know, friendly. And you put those meters in there and it says a different, it it gives a different message. So I kind of like the idea of the one percent. I'm not, you know, just, it's just an idea. The second thing that I'm hearing.
I just want to clarify for those in the audience, I I'm gonna give you another minute because you do represent twenty-four tenants in the bridge.
Thank you.
Need to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The employees that are making like very low wage and coming in, some of them are living out of town. So you you have a proposal for parking passes. And so some of these people, even if they have a Sandpoint address, they're living out of town, and so they won't get that benefit. Or just people coming downtown, the passes. I'm hearing the feedback that it just seems unfair, okay? So my idea, my solution would be, can we extend the radius of, you know, that parking pass discount? If we're gonna go with the parking pass to extend to Sagal, to extend, you know, to that out there in Sully Valley, you know, in that in that perimeter? Because I think that will help overcome some of that disgruntledness that some people are feeling that they, you know, that only the people who live downtown are getting a better deal. This is just the feedback I'm getting. And then the last, last thing I want to say is that I really appreciate Jason going out and doing a lot of that marketing. And I appreciate him pulling us all in. I just wanted to state that we're here to to be together as one to find a solution. And I think Sherri stated that very well. I'm also of that same mindset. I want to be here as a part of the solution because our downtown is really the heart of the city in so many ways, those those business owners. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you so much, and I just want to restate that this is a process and we value your opinion and participation in that process. So I'm sure we'll come up with lots of interesting solutions and bring them to the council. So any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, we have Matthew Loem.
Citizen of the year, you mean? All right, right. No, it's good to see you guys and thanks for letting me speak. One thirty seconds on the dog program, it's just been so awesome. And when we show up with our dogs, the people on the beach, they know exactly what we're doing there and they're cheering for us. And we're not gonna reverse the tide in one year, but we, working with Jason, we rock and roll. And so thanks for for doing this program, we've saved a lot of keys and let's just keep it going, it's going great. I also have a unit on Cedar Street Bridge and I, you know, I'm very good friends with these women. And I also spend two thirds of my life up there painting and listening to this thing. This parking thing is the biggest thing that I, you know, it just, it won't go away. It follows you at every bar, every restaurant, something like that. You guys know that, a lot of you have the same. I just wanted to say that I apologize because normally I come with like a good solution in mind. And at this time, I don't have one and I don't just want to stand in front of here and just do bleeding heart stuff. But I do, people do know that I like to do community outreach stuff. And so I've been approached about this to say, tell those guys, you know, not that I can tell you guys anything, but I hear phrases like, it feels like a Sandpoint's loss of innocence, all of a sudden, you know, instead of parking here, you you know, those, the good days are over. They're saying City Hall is doing a money grab, they're just, you know, that's, nothing says money grab like parking meters all over the place. They're saying that Sandpoint is filled with hardworking businesses, it's the pole star of the entire community, is these businesses downtown. If anything were to happen to wiggle that a little bit, Sandpoint chews and spits out businesses, you guys know it. It's very hard to succeed in downtown Sandpoint, and if people don't want to come because they don't like the parking, this is the word on the street, they're they're worried about the vibrational effect. Sandpoint was, you know, I guess they say the devil is in the details and a small detail, like whether you pay for parking or not for parking, don't underestimate that as a small detail, it's gonna look different, it's gonna feel different, it's going to be different, very different. The most different thing that I've ever, I've seen since I've lived here will be parking meters. So they bring up Coeur d'Alene, are we trying to be Coeur d'Alene? When you go into Coeur d'Alene, an amazing city, but it does feel like a parking project. Everything is parking and it's just, you see parking cops and there's just parking, it's it's on your mind and in your head. Sherri had mentioned a good idea about the one percent. I honestly don't know how that would work and I'm happy to learn as much more as I can about it. But if anything were, people are saying, oh, they want to charge us to come downtown. These are all the wrong things to be hearing. So I guess what I'm just saying is if, and the worst thing you can do is be like everybody else, meaning the knee-jerk reaction to anything is just put up parking meters. If you're low on money, charge for parking, charge people to come downtown. So I guess I'm just asking, before it's a done deal, please remain a little bit open, give it a little time for ideas to flow in. I'll start turning my wheels, let's let some other people turn on, maybe a one percent taxes line. But handle this with care, it's it's gonna look and feel different overnight, so beware that the city is very nervous about it. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, no one else has signed up?
Thank you, Madam Clerk or Deputy Clerk. Let's move on. That will conclude the general public comment portion of the meeting. Next is the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills for the approval is four hundred and seventy-six thousand, eleven dollars and forty-five cents for regular payables. Counsel, do you have any questions or any items you wish to remove from the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Go moved.
Second.
Moved by Schreiber, second by Espiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Espiro?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to the public hearing on this evening's agenda. For the record, any written comments received were forwarded and provided the council, if received in time to do so. We'll begin with the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget. Then following approval of the budget, we'll hear testimony regarding changes to city fees. Before we take public testimony, do any council members have any questions for staff regarding the budget? Hearing none. We're now prepared to proceed with the public hearing. Both are public hearings this evening. Please note, the city policy provides for the presiding officer to allow gifted time during a public hearing, where you may gift your time to someone else. The person gifting may do so only once and the person receiving time may receive only one gift for a total of up to six minutes. If you are gifted time, please state as much, then you will begin speaking and state the name of the person who gifted you their time. For the gifting of time, both parties must be present here in the chambers. Otherwise, each speaker will have up to three minutes. Please note that the rules of decorum as recited earlier are in effect. If you are on Zoom and wish to testify, you may raise your hand at this time. I would ask, the interest of time, that those testifying, please not repeat testimony that has already been given by others. If you would, please simply indicate that you are in agreement with others who have testified before you. Public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Mr. Mayor, no one has signed up.
Are there any members of the public who haven't testified who wish to do so? This will be the last opportunity before the hearing is closed. The public hearing is now closed. We will now move on to the action item on the agenda for deliberation discussion of the annual appropriation ordinance. Counsel, you have before you the ordinance for the city budget totaling forty-nine million, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Is there any counsel deliberation at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
So there was discussion just a minute ago about the local option tax as a possibility. And I want to note that voters recently declined to approve local option tax. And what we heard in public comments, as well as what I've heard from community members, was that it wasn't that they disagreed with the goal of that option tax to fix our streets and sidewalks. It was that they don't trust the city to use our taxpayer, tax dollars wisely. And likewise, the results of our recent bond survey revealed a similar insight that voters want a new treatment plant, but they don't trust us to spend appropriately. And I want to start by saying that the vast majority of this budget is reasonable spending on the essential services that our community wants. But I'm concerned that some of the capital projects in this budget are going to exacerbate that community weariness. We have millions of dollars going to projects that aren't in our plans. We have stormwater improvements that are happening prior to our stormwater planning process. I believe that this budget is council's biggest opportunity to regain the trust of our community and prove that we're wise stewards of this, these public funds. And we need to focus that discretionary spending on projects that have a noticeable impact on our constituents' daily lives. I just don't see this budget doing that.
Councilman Schreiber, is there a specific item on the budget you wish to make a motion to amend? Or is that just a statement on your perspective of the budget?
I made several motions at the last meeting and they were declined, so I'm not going to go through that again.
Okay, thank you. Any other counsel deliberation on the budget? I will now ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, termed the annual appropriation ordinance pursuant to Idaho Code Section fifty dash one zero zero three, appropriating forty-nine million, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars to defray the necessary expenses and liabilities of the city of Sandpoint, Idaho, for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-five, levying a sufficient tax upon the taxable property and specifying the objects and purpose for which said appropriation is made, providing for separability, publication, and an effective date.
I would entertain a motion that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only.
Second.
Moved by Espiro, second by Rule. This will be a roll call vote.
Excuse me. Is that not open to discussion then, since a motion was made?
If you would like to discuss, proceed.
Like, I guess my comment or question would be, is there any discussion about what Councilman Schreiber has shared? I mean, I understand.
Duquette, I would, I would respectfully ask that if there's a element of the budget you wish to put on the floor for the council to consider for amendment, you articulate and make that motion. If there's not, you know, we've gone over the budget and it's before you and.
Well, and like.
Up for consideration.
Councilman Schreiber said last time there was some items tried, but, okay.
Third time's a charm. No?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Espiro.
A point of clarification, this is just about the title, right?
This is about the title and then we're going to go into a request to suspend the rules to pass the ordinance, which is the budget, which we pretty much need to do. We're going to.
Yeah, just making it very clear.
Operate after the first of October.
Yeah, just to make it clear what we're voting on. Somebody really wants to discuss that, they can, I guess.
I mean, ideally, if there's something that any member of the council feels they want to change, that's irresponsible or out of line, they could make a motion to address a line item in the budget. But I felt like we kind of went through that at our last meeting. But if not, is anyone, we do have a motion, I'm sorry. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Espiro?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
No.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
The ordinance is passed its first reading by title only. I would entertain a motion that the rule is requiring three separate readings. Once the ordinance's entirety be suspended, the ordinance pass its second and third reading under suspension of the rules.
Go moved.
Second.
Moved by Rule, second by Dick. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Espiro?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Motion passes and the ordinance is considered read, passed, and adopted under suspension of the rules. Thank you to Finance Director Sarah Linz, our directors and staff, and the council members. Congratulations on the adoption of your fiscal two thousand twenty-six budget. With the budget adopted, I'll now entertain a motion for approval of the resolution certifying the amount of the foregone increase that is to be included in the budget. I'll need a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Howard. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Espiro?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on. Next is the public hearing on the proposed new city fees and fees proposed to increase by more than five percent. Do council members have any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Council President.
I did have a comment. I'm not sure if it's more appropriate for deliberation. Will we deliberate this after we hear the public?
After Fonda?
Yeah, I would wait for deliberations unless it's a question for staff in relationship to the fees.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one. I'm going to wait for the deliberation.
All right. We'll now proceed with the public hearing. If you're on Zoom and wish to testify, you may raise your hand at this time. The rules previously stated for public testimony are still in effect and the public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, please call our first speaker.
Mr. Mayor, we have Ben McRan.
Good evening, Mr. McRan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here with a fellow Dover resident, Rick Decker, and he's gifting me his three minutes. As I said, my name is Ben McRan. I'm a resident of Dover. I'm the owner's rep, project manager for the Avril Edgewater Hotel redevelopment. I'm here to advocate for a fair and balanced approach to the proposed impact fees increase. Specifically, I'm asking the council to either grandfather projects with an existing conditional use permit under the current fee schedule, or to implement a phased increase beginning in mid-two thousand twenty-six. To give the development community time to respond to the additional financial burden the proposed fees will place on development. As I will share, our project cannot absorb the proposed increase. We are in fact to submit building permits in early two thousand twenty-six. Tourism is the foundation of our economy. Forty-three percent of Sandpoint's economy is directly tied to tourism. Visitors come here for our natural assets, unique community, and their spending sustains local businesses from restaurants and shops to outfitters and galleries. Hotels are essential to this system. Each new room is not just lodging. It's an economic engine that circulates money into the broader community. The council made a decisive decision last year to double the city's occupancy tax from seven to fourteen percent. This policy was intended to ensure visitors, not residents, fund a larger share of the city's infrastructure and tourism promotion. From our research, this local option occupancy tax expires in two thousand thirty-five. Thus, the hotel will pay fourteen percent over the next seven years, amounting to twelve to seventeen million dollars in revenue to the city. But the revenue stream only grows if we have the hotel capacity to generate it. This project alone would contribute millions annually, annually in occupancy tax revenue, in additional property tax, jobs, and an estimated eighty to one hundred million dollars per year in guest spending in Sandpoint. Studies show for every dollar in lodging spent, six to nine dollars are spent in the community. Additionally, conferences and events in the spring and fall so that will help this project bring business to businesses that weather the low seasons. If this project stalls, the city doesn't just lose impact fee, it loses years of reoccurring occupancy tax and economic benefit. Yes, a project of this scale places demand on infrastructure, but the long-term benefits far exceed the short-term costs. Millions in annually occupancy tax revenue was recently doubled. Substantial property tax contributions, job creation from construction, permanent hospitality positions, and the multiplier effect for jobs in the, across the community, and ongoing visitor spending, again, of eighty to a hundred million dollars each year. Hotel development is one of the most challenging forms of real estate to finance. Projects depend on delicate finance stacking. Debt equity, small shifts in costs make a break feasibility, make or break a feasibility. At the proposed seven thousand, seven hundred and three per room, a hundred and five percent increase, this project is simply unviable. The increase adds a million dollars in upfront costs to the project that cannot be absorbed, increasing from current impact fees of just over three hundred thousand to almost one point three million dollars. Again, the project cannot move forward. If this happens, the city will know, will gain no impact fees. But more importantly, it will lose the tax revenue, jobs, economic activity that far outweigh those fees. Projects with existing conditional use permits like this one were planned and budgeted under the current fee schedule. To change the rules midstream undermines the trust that developers and investors place in the city's process. That's why I urge you to grandfather projects with existing permits under the current fee schedule, or at the very least, adopt a phased implementation beginning in middle of two thousand twenty-six. This approach gives the development community time to adjust financing, budgets to account for the increased fees, without abruptly jeopardizing projects already well underway. Council members, you wisely doubled occupancy tax to capture more revenue for the, from our visitors, but that policy only delivers results if new lodging projects can move forward. By grandfathering existing conditional use projects or phasing in fees starting in mid-two thousand twenty-six, you ensure Sandpoint secures the long-term benefits, millions in occupancy tax, millions in property tax, hundreds of jobs, and eighty to one hundred million in annual guest spending. We remain committed to adhering to the current fee schedule and to the agreed-upon parking in lieu of fee of four hundred thousand dollars that we have proposed to help support the improvements to parking at City Beach. The choice is not between infrastructure or growth, it's about timing and fairness. A phased or grandfathered approach protects projects currently underway while still moving the city towards its long-term fee structure. The long-term benefit of this project to Sandpoint far exceeds the short-term impact on infrastructure. Let's make sure we don't lose sight of that. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ben. Any other public comment during the hearing?
Mr. Mayor, no one else has signed up.
Thank you. We will close the public hearing. We will now move on to the action item on the agenda for deliberation discussion regarding the changes to city fees. Counsel, deliberate.
Mr. Mayor.
Do you recognize, Councilwoman?
Wait, is, I guess I would ask legal, is this a time to make an amendment? A motion to amend the fee schedule or not?
So I would probably complete deliberations with all council members having the opportunity to comment on what changes they would like to make, if any, before there's a decision on what motion should be placed on the floor. Okay.
Any deliberation, council members?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Council President Rule.
I did have one comment relative to, I'm still struggling with the, the Dock Street and Marine Slip occupant fee. I'm not struggling with the fee as much as I'm struggling with the, and maybe this is a question for staff. So with the unlimited portion of that, I know we talked through this. But I would feel more comfortable and want to ask the councils that instead of making it unlimited for slip occupants, that we put like a seventy-two hour limit on there that would allow them to have, it would cover three-day weekends in the summer if they did want to go out onto the water and boat. And it would also allow for some rotation in the Dock Street parking for the other slip owners over there because there are more slips than there are parking slots. And so if it's an unlimited type of thing, we might get a situation where even the occupants and owners, or not owners, but leasers of the slips would run into the same problem of not having a place to park. So that was just something that I sort of turned over in my mind.
Thank you, Council President Rule. Director Welker, any comments on that? And you can hear mine first. Councilwoman Rule, we have not adopted the parking actual implementation yet. We're going to be working on that over the next six months, including engagement with the DSBA or Downtown Shopping District. So it's my understanding that at such time that parking fees and parking, the parking plan is brought to you, you will have an opportunity to adjust these, set more the ceiling of the fees. But Jason, correct me if I've taken us off course.
Yeah, just to clarify, the only parking related fees in the new fee schedule are for those passes, for the monthly and annual passes for residents, for downtown business owners, downtown, sorry, downtown business employees, downtown residents, people who live in the downtown core, and Marina Slip occupants. So the, the Marina Slip occupant pass was intended for people who need to access their boats and might be going out to, you know, the Green Monarchs for a night or two, or sailing down to, to, you know, another port somewhere on the lake. If council thinks a seventy-two hour time limit is, is beneficial over unlimited, which might allow for longer boating trips, there, there's probably a small number of Marina Slip occupants who might sail to Bayview. I understand that's a couple day round trip at least. So if they think they can be back in three days, I don't think there's going to be a large percentage of, of parkers there for whom seventy-two hours is prohibitive. But there's also not a large number of Marina Slip occupants who are going to be out for more than three days. So we'd probably be targeting just a very small number of Marina Slip occupants if we put a seventy-two hour cap on there without a huge benefit to the community. I don't foresee people parking there for four days or more. So unlimited was just to recognize that Marina Slip holders might need to take their boats out for multiple days at a time and should be able to leave their, their vehicle there.
Thanks, Mr. Wel.
Yep.
Any other counsel deliberation on the fees?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Direct this to Mr. Dean. Can you maybe articulate if, if we were to decide a phased-in approach for the impact fees, how in your mind would that work? And I know I'm putting you on the spot, but.
I like being put on the spot. For the record, good evening, Bill Dean, city planner.
For the record, good evening, Bill Dean, city planner. Thank you for the question. Um, the impacts, uh, to the city are obvious. You'd be collecting, uh, uh, fewer dollars later. Uh, the impacts to development community are numerous. It's a way to, um, uh, forecast what your expenses are going to be in terms of relative to the development process. It's a way to plan for that. It's a way to organize your finances around getting something off the ground. It's that simple.
And then if I can follow on, if we were to propose or adopt the grandfather of projects, what what would be the milestone to go say it has started, therefore it is awarded the grandfather or not?
Just a caution about grandfathering. I think if if the interest is to try to, um, assist the development community in shouldering this additional new burden, um, it's probably a safer, easier, um, easier to track, easier to implement approach if you were just to pick a later date, um, where the fees would take effect. Um, sometimes in development business, it's it's nice when both parties have skin in the game. Um, there's a little bit of pressure on the developer to perform in accordance with what they're telling us. It's also, um, you know, you know, for us, it's, uh, it's it's being flexible with with those rules. So instead of looking at grandfathering, um, because that can get complicated with expirations of permits and permits can be extended and next you know, we've got to sit with Zach and Fonda for a few hours to figure out, you know, if the fees take effect. Not that I don't like doing that, but, um, but honestly, I think that a better approach, if you're interested in in helping shoulder the burden would be to pick a a date and my recommendation to you would be pick a date that's, um, fairly, uh, near to where we are today. Um, I heard January building permits, great. How about end of January?
Thank you.
Welcome. Uh, Councilman Howard, um, sorry, Councilman Tickle, get right back to you, but just on a follow-up, there's a couple of things related to impact fees. The first is the state statute is very clear that impact fees are paid at the time of building permit. Um, so I don't know that we have the legal, um, ability, even if we wanted to to look at grandfathering, um, projects unless there was a building permit submitted. Uh, secondarily, um, when you look at, uh, options, I did meet with the representatives from the hotel this morning to talk about this issue. Uh, there are some other options available. Um, the hotel does fall within the Sandpoint, uh, downtown urban renewal footprint. Uh, urban renewal is qualified, justified, and, uh, uh, empowered to pay for, uh, elements of projects that are public elements, and they use the but-for test there. And that but-for test is if we don't get involved and do some element of the public project, whether it's infrastructure, fees, et cetera, uh, the project won't happen and we won't see this tax increment and and the lift. So that is an option for the developers is to, uh, approach urban renewal and see if they would be agreeable to supporting some, uh, portion of this impact fee. Um, running the quick numbers, if this, uh, proposed project actually gets a building permit and has a valuation of fifty million dollars and came online in two thousand twenty-eight, urban renewal would collect, uh, approximately five hundred thousand dollars, um, over per year, um, in increment. Uh, certainly significant amount that they could, um, you know, allow the developer to recapture before that district expires. Um, and then finally, the the third approach I I brought forward, um, outside of, uh, amending the fees that we adopted would be to look at the possibility to, um, delay the fees, and this is going to take legal analysis, but instead of at building permit, uh, at occupancy, time of occupancy, uh, that would get the developers approximately two years to not have to float that cost. So, uh, there are some options there. And then the final option, of course, is revisiting the phased approach, which, um, we voted on, I believe, one of the last two meetings, uh, or, uh, the actual in implementation of the impact fees, uh, when you do actually have that hearing coming up shortly to implement them and the date when you pass that ordinance.
Thank you.
Councilman Dick.
Yeah, thank you. You answered most of my questions, but Bill or Jason, maybe I could get some idea besides the hotel. How many other projects that could be done between now, basically a year's time, are going to be affected by the increased impact fees and the parking in lieu of fees? And and I guess the other last portion of this that might stall out the development.
Uh, in response to your.
In clarification, previous to the response, you can only speak to projects that are past their approval time and appeal periods.
And then I should, let me make one last, make one last disclosure. I have no deals with Avril Hospitality. I haven't spoken with them since September of two thousand twenty-four, so.
Thanks for that clarification, Councilman Dick.
The only large project that is likely to pull building permits between now and the end of this calendar year is the Farm and Flats apartment project. But I I will point out that their impact fees are actually decreasing under the new structure because of the small square footage of those units. You'll you'll recall that residential impact fees are now scaled based on square footage, so their net effect of the change in the impact fees is almost nothing. It's literally a few dollars per unit or a hundred dollars per unit, and it's in the positive direction for for the Farm and Flats developers. Other than that, there are no mul- large multifamily or commercial projects that are likely to pull building permits through to you now and, let's say, January.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe some small, single-family residential, things like that.
And then let's let's move on to parking a little bit. We've heard representatives that almost, uh, from almost seventy downtown businesses. Um, we heard some on the parking meters that can be discussed at a later point in time with the community. Uh, but there were concerns on the parking passes, maybe specific to employee passes as well, too. Um, I was at the same meeting that you were. I've been at all the meetings as well. Uh, it was kind of a mixed bag of what the businesses were, what they thought about it. I think everybody's had a little bit of time to put their heads together and discuss it as well. Um, after hearing what you heard today, what do you say about the, maybe we didn't market it as well? Or maybe we didn't give the groups of business owners, um, as much opportunity to workshop this with you instead of us putting on a workshop for them and telling them that this is what we're going to do?
Um, just a little, just to remind you, we we did a community survey that had one thousand eight hundred responses. I think that's the largest response rate to any survey the city's ever done. It's four and a half times what we received for the wastewater plant survey. Um, we had Chamber of Commerce presentations, Rotary Club presentations. Um, we had a DBA meeting here back in February. All those same people were at that meeting as well to get their input. Um, there was some misunderstanding, I think, on one of the commentators' behalf. The the parking pass is is available to all downtown business employees regardless of their place of residence. They could live in Canada. If they work downtown, they're eligible for the same pass as somebody who lives on Fifth and Pine. Um, so that that was, I think, a misunderstanding from the the pass program. Um, the the outreach continues. We've sent mailers to a hundred and fourteen downtown addresses. I think you probably received one. Some will return to my desk and I'll be hand-delivering those. We're doing everything we can to get these business owners uh, to understand the intent. The intent is to achieve eighty-five percent occupancy rates downtown. We're currently ninety-seven percent on those two hundred parking spots on First and Second Avenue. The other important thing to point out is that there are eight hundred and fifty free street parking spaces under our proposed parking management plan. We're talking about taking two hundred of those that are currently occupied at nearly a hundred percent during peak hours and putting those into paid parking. So eight hundred and fifty free street parking spaces remain. We're not going to paid parking in downtown Sandpoint. We're going to paid parking along a handful of blocks where occupancy rates are currently nearly one hundred percent. So this is the message I'll continue to communicate and seek input from, um, downtown businesses. You know, a one percent tax, I think everybody in the city would be all for that, but that doesn't solve the over, um, occupancy of our of our downtown commercial core during peak summer months. And the message I'm going to continue to communicate is the goal is here not to make money for the city or to, uh, it's not a money grab. Our goal is to achieve effective capacity, which is eighty-five percent occupancy rate downtown. If we find that paid parking deters people from coming downtown in the winter, parking will be free in the winter because we do not want to see fifty percent of our street stalls occupied or forty percent. We want to see eighty-five percent. If we're not at eighty-five percent, it means we're charging too much. So the mayor's always talked about dynamic pricing. That is absolutely where we're going to implement downtown. This fee schedule has nothing to do with street parking fees. This fee schedule only has about five parking passes. So if you have questions about the parking passes, I did want to clarify that the parking passes are available to everybody regardless of residency, if you work at a downtown business.
Yeah, and I just think it's important, um, you know, not to conflate these. Uh, we've got City Beach and Downtown Parking Lot passes and a couple other spots, such as the Water Plant and the former Inn Lot. So that's parking passes for residents and non-residents. And then there's the subject of parking meters and metered street parking, uh, both of which, uh, you will have the opportunity to, uh, work through. Uh, this first step in this process was to make sure that you're understanding and on board with the concept, uh, over the next six months. Um, Director Welker, the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, the Public Works Director will all be working together in concert with the public to understand what technologies are out there, uh, where that might work well, what that might look like, what it might cost. So this is early in the process. I'm thrilled that the Downtown Business Shopping Association is engaged and aware. That's really important, uh, to participate, so. Um, I would just answer that, uh, none of this is set in stone. Uh, we don't even have, um, the actual program ready to roll out, so, uh, that will take a lot of public input and a lot of deliberation by the council.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman, you're recognized.
Then I guess I'm confused. Why are we having these fees here to vote on if this is all not set in stone?
Because we need to adopt the fee schedule at this time of the year, uh, through a public hearing. Um, we don't actually implement these fees until we have the program, uh, to implement them. So this is our time to adopt the fees for the year. And, uh, if you so choose and do adopt a parking program, uh, and plan, uh, these fees would be applicable unless you change them at that time of adoption.
And so then if we did not vote for a parking plan, none of this would make any difference.
Correct.
And so the, and excuse me for not being as savvy as the rest of you are on all of this.
I apologize.
Well, it seems I might have to, um. What were they speaking of? Any of these passes?
I I believe what I picked up was they were, uh, primarily concerned about, uh, employees coming in to park uh, and the prospects of potential parking meters on First, Second, and Cedar or other places that you decide, uh, you would like to consider them.
But that is part of the parking plan, not not this fee thing. So we would not be going against.
We're we're going to need to contract with a provider, um, for printing these passes, for signing where the passes are applicable, for enforcement. Uh, there's several more steps before we actually go out and give out passes and say, okay, we're now charging for parking in these these areas contemplated by these new fees.
Okay, I still would like to have a discussion on the city taxpayers paying to park at the beach.
I, uh, understand that you, and I'll put put this in my words, not yours, but you are concerned that city residents already pay taxes and therefore should be relieved of, uh, the cost of buying a pass to park downtown.
Yes.
Um, I believe it's most appropriate to talk about that when we do get to the parking plan, Councilwoman Duket, uh, and I expect that to be something maybe four or five months down the road. Because we're just now engaging with the technology providers to understand what 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 parking solutions and technology could be available.
It seems to me if we okay this, these are the prices that we are saying will be for these passes. I guess that just is confusing to me if we're saying, okay, yep, we agree with this, but I don't agree. I, like I said, I'm.
It's it's a valid point. Um, uh, all I can tell you at this time is we don't have the plan yet. Um, we don't know what the installations will be, whether it'll be those codes you use your phone with, whether it'll be a, uh, gate, whether it'll be a punch button like at the airport where you take a ticket. So we still have, uh, a lot of investigation and assessment to do. Staff will be bringing the council a parking, uh, management plan that talks about technology, locations. And at that time, uh, if you choose to reduce those fees, um, you will have the opportunity, if you have four votes, to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
If I may, um, we have a motion on the table, correct?
No.
No, we do not.
No, we are deliberating.
Okay, well, I would like to, um.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion and then we can.
I've not been able to talk.
Yeah.
Well, we can discuss after the motion is made, correct?
Um, I have a question for.
Uh, which is, uh, if you, uh, going back to Council President Rule, if you want to make a, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution adopting new city fees, approving changes to the existing fees and the fee schedule.
Who moved?
Their second.
Second.
Motion by Rule, second by Espirito, so discussion.
I would like to make a suggestion, um, that if council members are not comfortable with the fees, that, um, after they make their point and they're still not comfortable, that they choose to vote no on the fees.
Okay.
Um, so that's your right and that expresses your opinion to everyone else out there by doing it that way.
Would that be on all?
Uh, council, I'm going to go around the horn here. Any other discussion you'll have one opportunity to discuss?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schreber.
Yeah, I have a question for Director Welker. At the last meeting, we that we covered this topic, we talked about the radio tower rental and I asked if that was, um.
That's more of a Cheryl question, but.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, the Cheryl here.
Uh, I might be able to help you, Councilman Schreber, with your question on that.
Sorry. Has there been any, uh, competitive analysis on those rates?
Um, we do some market analysis, uh, I guess. Uh, I don't know the depth of those, but we do look at, uh, prevailing rates.
Okay, because I happen to have, uh, taken a look at IDL's rates and they're significantly higher than ours, like multiple times higher than ours. So my concern is that we're not charging enough for our radio tower rates.
Have you been to our radio tower, Councilman Schreber?
Not in the summertime, no.
It's, uh, I don't know what the IDL access is. Ours is in a four-by-four road with a bunch of scree and challenging terrain, but, uh, Cheryl.
The nature of radio towers.
Um, the question came up, do we do a competitive analysis for a market analysis for rates up on Baldy? And I answered that I thought we do look at other rates to make sure we're in the ballpark.
We did. When we created those rates, it was working with, um, Washington Department of Lands as well as Idaho. And the rates were developed from then, and then it gets increased each year. But those were how the rates were determined.
Good.
Five years ago.
So we looked at it five years ago and then it's just been kind of that.
And then it just increases every year.
Gotcha.
Um, but that was the base foundation.
Okay.
And we used, um, we worked with both Idaho Department of Lands and Washington to come up with what rates based on the amenities that we have there.
Sure.
And the access.
I mentioned that.
Which is not ideal.
Um, sure.
So, yeah, so then that's how it was all evaluated. I think it was twenty twenty that we did those rates.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, we can always revisit it, um, but.
It it seems to me that you should be taking the five percent. We can go up to five percent, right?
Yes.
We we chose to increase that rate less than five percent and and I was saying while you were out of the room that I saw the rates that IDL is charging and it's significantly higher than ours, so.
Yes, they have.
In order to catch up with them.
Their amenities are much, uh, they're vastly different than ours as well as the access to it and the security around, um, the amenities, because if you've been up there, um, that site is completely open. It's not fenced off, um, and so the less seas really put their equipment up at their own risk. Um, so we really can't charge the same as, um, Idaho Department of Lands.
Okay. That's a great explanation.
It just doesn't, yeah, it's just.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other council deliberation?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Council.
I'm not sure if this is for Bill, Jason, or Legal, maybe all three, but we heard business owners talk about the four busy months ahead of the year and the eight months. It's difficult for them downtown, you know. I I I think of our Swatch Mountain, which does bring people in, but not necessarily all of them are downtown. Um, I think of Coachava when they have their summit every year. They bring a lot of people in and downtown seems to thrive during that week. Um, and so I I I hear about the development impact fees, how it's going to affect, say, the the hotel or maybe other developments, but it didn't seem like there were very many in the pipeline. Legal, is it possible to move forward but to take, um, the development impact fee off as to a later date as we?
Just to clarify.
Yeah.
So I I apologize. I was not speaking to our downtown businesses when we started this agenda item. We moved really quick through consent, so I was shocked, taken off off guard, but um, I did I did intend to clarify when Sarah came up for the beginning of this agenda item that the fee schedule says. the fee schedule says immediately for implementation of the development impact fees. To clarify, that should say as soon as legally possible, which is not immediately. So what's gonna happen after tonight is the next council meeting, September 3rd, we're holding a public hearing to amend Title 12, which is our development impact fee ordinance. According to state law, the implementation of those impact fees cannot go into effect until 30 days after a public hearing is held to amend the ordinance. So right now, the, the actual implementation date is, is likely to be closer to October 3rd. So just wanted to clarify that for you. And I think in response to your question, Bill had a good suggestion earlier that perhaps delaying the implementation is at your discretion. October 3rd is the earliest we can implement development impact fees, given state law. So, but as far as when that implementation takes place, that's up to, to council. And I suggest you make the decision tonight. Thank you.
You say not make that decision tonight?
Again, my question might be for Legal. We can pick and choose what we want to postpone or delays as your suggestion, Mr. Welker. Is that correct?
He's not talking about removing the fee from the schedule.
Correct.
He's talking about delaying the start time of the implementing, implementation. What you're adopting tonight is just the amount of the fee on the schedule.
Okay, thank you.
It's similar to the discussion that was had related to the parking fees that you don't have a date certain of when those would be implemented simply because you don't have a parking management plan yet.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Let's see, I've got you, Kyle, and Joel. I just want to give other council members the opportunity before we go back for a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Just a quick comment. I understand the necessity for the impact fee increases. I think we heard from the hotel representative, that is a project I think we all want to see come to fruition. So I cannot in good conscience approve the implementation of those fees without understanding there would be a negative impact. And so I, I don't know exactly to what date we would have to delay that to, to help them make sure that project comes through. And the second one is on the, on the parking pass. It feels like we're trying to go put these fees in place before you brought the overall parking plan to us. And we heard obviously that there's a lot of concern from the downtown businesses. And so I, I, on that particular one, I would like to also find a way to delay the implementation of that to till we can get more impact, input from the, the businesses downtown. What creative ideas can we come up with in totality? Parking passes, parking meters, whatever that whole plan looks like, so that we're all unified with the businesses downtown. So I, I have a hard time adopting the fees as they are proposed tonight. And would be in favor of pushing the implementation off so that we can find a win-win.
So for clarification, your proposal would be to remove the parking pass fees
Yeah.
and the impact fees from this fee schedule for the purposes of this resolution.
Correct. Or, or to delay the implementation of all impact fees to a date where we can get more input from the public and.
Councilman Howard, those are two different things, the impact fees and the parking pass fees, right? Just to reiterate, the parking pass fees, we're adopting our maximum fees tonight. If, if we don't have parking fees in the schedule, we will have to reopen this fee public hearing at a later date.
Yeah.
Having these maximum fees in the schedule means that once we've come and you'll have plenty of more chances to weigh in on what those fees actually are. But we're basically setting a ceiling of $30 for non-San Point residents for an annual parking pass right now and $15 for city residents for an annual parking pass that allows six hours per day at City Beach. That's the maximum fee we can charge. If we take these fees off the fee schedule, we have to notice and hold a whole new public hearing for an amendment to the fee schedule in the future. We can always implement lower parking fees in the future without taking them off the fee schedule tonight. So I would just request that we don't take them off the fee schedule, rather just recognize that they're not being implemented anytime soon and we're adopting a maximum fee tonight.
To clarify, my point is I think we've got the cart before the horse here.
Well, we did, okay, sorry.
I understand, understand what, what you're trying to go do, but I think we need the comprehensive plan in totality to go then say, yes, we're okay with those fees that we're recommending. And I agree, we can adjust them down if we want to. I'm not sure that we even want, I, I don't know that we even want parking pass fees in our fee schedule. Again, I would like to see the totality of that plan to go understand.
Do, I'm, I'm a little confused about what you mean by the plan, because we have an adopted parking management plan that we adopted at the end of June. That included the proposals. That was six months of community outreach and research and preparation.
Yeah.
So we have, we have an adopted council.
With, with no details.
That included these fees in it.
These fees, yes.
Yes.
But nothing more than that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and.
Clarification for council.
Go ahead, Legal.
Don't forget, you do have a motion and a second on the floor that will need to be voted on as everybody have.
I, I'm tracking.
Good.
And tracking deliberations. And I, I just want to follow up with that, Councilman Howard. As was mentioned, your development impact fee hearing and ordinance adoption is forthcoming. There are many ways to delay the adoption. For instance, somebody could table the first reading until a date certain. You could slow row, not skip the emergency. Three readings in one night. You could make a motion to have them effective on a certain date or publish them on a certain date. So to overcome that issue or is, uh, subject, I believe you can move forward with these fees and you still have a second bite, the apple for the impact fees.
Thank you.
Councilman Dick, you're the only one who hasn't spoken on this.
Oh, I, I spoke, I, I actually concur with Councilman Howard as well too, and Counselor Duquette, I understand, I think one of the things that we might be missing here is regardless of how this meeting goes and that we're just setting the maximum parking, the information that's going to come back to the downtown community is that we now have a parking management program with fees that, you know, regardless of the amount of hard work that everybody's done and Jason, you certainly have done amount of hard work and meetings and six months worth of outreach, and I've been there as well too. But them potentially not feeling included. And Mr. Mayor, I think I'll remind you of the amount of time that we spent on the comprehensive plan as well going through to make sure that the community felt like they were included in this as well too. So I think, and then going into the hotel portion of this. I believe the vote, what last, what two weeks ago was four to three, with you being the tie-breaking vote on phasing the impact fees, they, they are incredibly steep, not just for the hotel, but the hotel has an amazing economic benefit for the entire community. So I too would probably be in favor of either tabling that or delaying that out however that looks. With the understanding that we are also subsidizing development. And, and that's how it's going to look to the community by phasing this out to potentially get one or two projects done in the community. And quite frankly, I think the economic benefit of the hotel for all of us, the totality of Sandpoint probably outweighs that. I guess my only concern with that, with the impact fees are how long do we delay? How do we know from the owners when they can get this building permit? How long, do we, do we delay it infinitely? I mean, because the building permit real, truly is what sets off where, where you are at with the impact fees. So despite where we, where we may delay this tonight, we have no assurances on when a building permit's actually going to be pulled and maybe a question, has a demolition permit been pulled already?
Not yet.
Okay.
So thank you, Councilman Dick. Again, on the impact fees, I, I would encourage you to proceed as on there and, and tackle that when we actually have the ordinance and the hearing on that for the implementation, the date, all of that. I think you can tactfully move that to that subject at that time. And then on the parking, again, you could either move to remove, there is a motion on the table, those fees at this time, but I would encourage you to say we do have a plan that was adopted by the, the council that included these fees. We don't know what the technology is. I sincerely would tell you that you have an opportunity to address that when we come back to you in five months with the actual plan for rolling out a parking management structure.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Rule.
So I guess I have two statements. I would caution the council to take a broader look at the fact that we did do an impact study. Don't forget the information that we learned and don't base your decision upon one business, one individual. That doesn't necessarily look good to the public either. We have to be equal and fair to all development that occurs out there. This is going to come back. We could set a date certain if you're more comfortable with that. A vote was taken on it. As far as parking fee piece, sometimes we may have to make hard decisions. It's not easy to sit up here. The perception is always different than what the actual outcome is. We're gonna have many options to to discuss what the fees are and set that up as they are out there. So yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Council President. There is a motion to approve the fees as presented and a second.
Do we get a second chance to speak?
You have not had a second chance to speak. Is that my discretion?
I'm sorry, I'm just still not clear on some things.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette. I'll try to clarify any questions you have on this point.
Okay, well. Again, taking things out, I also have, I would like to talk to Jason for one minute about the Russell fees also. That was something else I was interested in. And like the Counselor Dick already said, perception is we're passing those fees. It's already been published in the paper, two papers, that these are our fees. So people are already thinking that. It just, it doesn't sit well with me to pass those and then say they're really not our fees. Just a comment for clarity.
So Councilwoman Duquette, if you are uncomfortable with the motion to approve the fees as presented, you could vote no and if three others or four others vote no, then a new motion can be made to amend those, withdraw them, et cetera. But the motion on the table right now is to approve the fees as presented, which are the ceiling, the most the fees could be. They do not guarantee that this is what the fees are going to be when you finally address the parking management.
So do I get to ask Jason and Mr. Welker about the Russell?
You know, I think Jason would be available if you have a question, a brief question on that.
I just, is there an issue with separating the tennis private court fee from the pickleball court fee? It appears what they would like is a $10 private court fee instead of a 20 like the tennis people have.
Well.
That an option?
The, what has been practiced up to now and what we're going to continue to practice is we're charging the same fee per tennis court for tennis and pickleball, per tennis court. So pickleball will continue to pay $20 per tennis court, which gives them access to two pickleball courts. That's the proposal.
Yeah, I, I get that. Their math came out to huge monthly rentals. I just heard that $10 was a choice they perhaps would agree with and still be.
So I think they're going to prefer what I just stated, which is actually less than $10 per pickleball court. So that's I, yeah, I think there was some confusion in the emails you received about how we charge for private court rental. The, the policy, the, the, the solution to the challenges with the the conflict over private facility use, not incentivizing membership is a policy response, not a fee response. So we're, we're addressing this through policy over how we handle. We have not had, had, had time to develop all of our policies for the Sports Center. We are still working on those. One of those policies that Ryan and I have been working on is the private court rental policy. So the fees are not going to change from what they've ever been. There's no change in the fees for private court rental. We're just implementing a policy that kind of closes a loophole on non-JER members coming in large numbers and using the facility without paying for a membership.
Council members, with all due respect, we've been going 24 minutes since the motion was made and you've all had the chance to deliberate. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
No.
Counselor Duquette?
No.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Espiro?
Uh, no.
Uh, I vote yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Uh, sure. We're about to move on to old, old business and the approval of the ballot language proposed for the election for the wastewater bond. But beforehand, we'll take a five-minute break, 7:15. You ready? Meetings reconvened at 7:23. Moving on to item 11. First under old business is the approval of ballot language proposed for the November 4, 2025 election. Voter approval for bonding to help fund a new wastewater treatment plant. We have Public Works Director Holly Ellis here, as well as some Bond Council and others in attendance remotely. So I will turn it over to Holly for her presentation.
Good evening, Holly Ellis, Public Works Director. I'll start with introductions to our team. So to my right here is Kyle with Keller &amp; Associates, our engineer. Online, we have Amy Holly with Portman Square, helping us with our education PR outreach campaign. And Daniel Quaid, our Bond Council. Tonight, I'll give you a background on the wastewater treatment plant. And then Kyle with Keller &amp; Associates is gonna give an update on two alternatives. We're presenting two bond alternatives. The first is a phased approach that eight, 80.3 million. The second approach is the full bonding amount of 130 million. Then we'll kick it off to Amy Holly with Portman Square to give you an update on the survey results from last week. Next steps on the outreach campaign. And then Daniel Quaid with Holly Troxel will give update on the bond and legal framework.
Just to be clear, we have Holly Troxel, we have Amy Holly, and then we have Holly Ellis. So please keep your Holly straight.
Hopefully I can keep it straight too.
Amy, thanks for being here. Thanks everyone for being here. And you're on mute, Amy, so you have to unmute your device.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be here.
My apologies, I lost a slide here, but I can give you an, an update on our project and why we're here addressing the plant. We are, we have, and we own, the city of Sandpoint owns and operates one wastewater treatment plant in Sandpoint. It was built in the 1950. Portions of it were from the Naval Farrogate Wastewater Treatment Plant. So some components of our plant that are in use today are actually from the 1940s. So with this infrastructure, it's aging. It needs to be replaced. Our risk right now is in regulatory compliance and water quality risks until we reconstruct the plant. The takeaways I would like to just kind of highlight before we jump into the alternatives. The either scenario, $130 million bond or the $80.3 million bond. We are going to continue to look for grants, look for loans, and our goal is not to bond for this full amount. We don't have those grants yet, which is why our approach is to bond for that full amount as the worst-case scenario. But just keep that in mind that there's gonna be a big funding component to this project as we look for grants. So at that, I'll kick things off to Keller &amp; Associates to describe from the technical perspective, what the full project would look like with $130 million with one bond request and then the $80.3 million phase one approach.
Yeah, thanks, Holly. So big, big recap. We were here in January getting the support of the city to apply for the letter of interest for DEQ. And if you recall at that meeting, I was a little pessimistic that we would get potentially ranked high enough to receive funding for that. And following a lot of coordination with DEQ, with our team and as well as the city's team and Mayor Jeremy Grim, you know, we were able to sneak in on some of the, I think there's only three projects funded on the wastewater side and we were able to get a partial funding part of the project, about 38 million, does that sound right, with some principal forgiveness. So that's really a, a great positive at, aspect moving forward that there's support for the project and that we are able to rank and score high enough to start, start down that road. With that being said, the full project and what the preliminary engineering report was developed was focused on. was developed was focused on replacing aging infrastructure that we're all aware of that is long past due and needs to be replaced. Virtually, this project touches about every facility inside the fence at the treatment plant and looks to improve that and plan for the future with growth as, as well as improve operations and improve overall um success with permit compliance today. The revised approach is potentially resulting in several different phases associated with this, which is the 80.3 million. And it's going to be focused on the most critical aspects of the infrastructure and replacing those. Um, but there's opportunities that there is higher risk of other failures or equipment malfunctions over this period that were not fully addressed with this project. Regardless, what I'm excited about is progress and working with many communities in the area. It is something to be said when you, we are continuing to make progress on this. So either option is ideal because there's a step in the right direction. When the facility plan was done in 2018, there was not a lot of movement for quite some time. And when we were selected to develop the preliminary engineering report, that was another step in the right direction. Applying for funding was another step in the right direction. And coming out for a revenue bond is another step in the right direction, showing the community that we are trying to make improvements. And that advancements means a lot to the community as well as everyone that's involved with this. So that being said, as you're all aware, you know, there's going to be challenges with the more phased approach. The duration would be somewhat undetermined. It could potentially cost more over time. But like Holly said, with many of these projects in Idaho, we're very successful in helping find funding. It's a completely different funding market than it was several years ago. But we're hopeful that as we continue to go down this road, that pretty much every stone is going to be turned over in an effort to make sure that we can do the best we can in finding that funding to to keep this impact as low as possible to the constituents. Because I think everyone in this room recognizes the overall cost of this is very impactful to everyone. And it's our duty to make sure that we are being advocates and doing our best diligence in finding um the grants that we can. So as a big picture, you know, a full project, replacing most infrastructure within the fence, the reduced project is going to be focused on the highest priority. Um, some of that phasing in the reduced project, instead of building three arration cells, we're looking at two to reduce costs on that. And then as additional funding is secured, you know, we would add on a third cell. Instead of building two secondary clarifiers, we would construct one at this time. And then depending how funding and costs shake out, you know, more could be added on in the future.
And I can share a map.
Yep.
So just a little bit of background, um, we're working with Keller on our preliminary engineering report. And I shouldn't try to multitask, full screen.
Zoom in.
May, maybe that's big enough?
Yeah, we can see it.
Fairly large.
All right, I'm failing my computer skills right now. Um, our, we're working on a preliminary engineering effort and one thing we tasked, the first thing we tasked Keller with was picking up our facility plan and updating it. So updating our cost efforts and making sure that our assumptions on the infrastructure were accurate. The 130 million dollars, the full project is looking at full reconstruction of the project with a very large contingency. Want to highlight, we're very early, very preliminary, really haven't kicked off what is considered design. We're in pre-design efforts. So that 130 million dollar is um has 40% contingency built in. There's 40% of unknowns. So the hope is that we go for grants and that we can also design and value engineer opportunities to get the price of this project down. Those efforts have not started to date. Uh, we need to go to these grant agencies with a bond in hand so that they'll consider our applications. And we need to start the, the design and engineering effort in order to value engineer and find a lot more cost savings. So the hope is, is that we could get that 130 million dollar down, a hundred dollars down by um through design. Without a lot, Kyle, just describe briefly the difference between um what we'd accomplish in the full project and what we would accomplish if we just had the phase one improvements as our focus right now.
Yeah, that, and I think, you know, on a high level, virtually everything there in green is kind of focused on it, um, the, the smaller phase. So for example, you just see one um circle, circle there. That's for the secondary clarifier. You know, at this 80 million dollar phase, we just entertain constructing one secondary clarifier. And then the same thing there for um the structure there with, uh, I think we have it called the process trains and blowers. You know, that facility, there's three cells there. And we are on, only showing two uh cells being constructed at this time. So that's kind of throughout the plant. There's uh partial improvements to postpone um and improve some of the most highest um replacement items that need to be addressed. And then I think Holly, if you want to flip to that table, it can just shed a little bit light in each facility if needed. And so we broke out every facility, more or less how the opinion of cost was prepared and denoted, you know, for the full project, obviously, those are included full improvements. And then in the reduced project, you know, we denote, hey, this is postponed for a later phase, or if there's a portion that is completed, you know, this is how we're envisioning this come together. And, and I, I would just like to echo what Holly said. We do believe there's a lot of opportunity to refine and improve this, and there's a lot of flexibility with this project as far as how things are retrofitted, how costs can be saved if uh grants do not come to the table. You know, what else can we do to stretch the dollar further to still make a huge impact on the facility?
Thanks, Kyle. Um, with that, Amy Holly, an update on our um survey.
Amy, before you jump in, I just want to um clarify one thing for the council that might not have uh been crystal clear. Uh, we did rank third in the state for funding from DEQ. Um, but that funding uh comes uh in the form of a uh repayment, uh basically a loan. And the, the state, I, I appreciate the legislature and the governor, they did provide us about $3 million in loan forgiveness. So that's basically money that they are investing in this plant. But uh, the money that roughly 38 million dollars that we were uh awarded is in the form of a loan. So it's uh, we've not had any federal grant direct funding for this at this time. Something we need to keep working on.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
I do have some questions about the two different options there. Um, if we were to go with the phased approach, do we have an idea of how much more the second phase or, or getting to that finish line would cost than if we just did it all at once? Like, I assume there's efficiencies in doing it all at once when you already have equipment mobilized and such.
Yeah, I would just say that there's so many unknowns right now. For example, um, we haven't secured any funding. We still have to pass a revenue bond. And with those huge, you know, unknowns, for example, if we only get 50 million, we're not doing an 80 million dollar project. So then what does that turn into? When's the next round of funding that is secured? When's the next revenue bond? How long is this work completed? There's just so many uh unknowns with that, that it would, any, any direction on that, it would be a pure guess from anyone.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add a little bit to that, um, uh, this PER effort has been really focused at the full project, the 130 million dollar project. If tonight we were to really focus our efforts on the phase one project, we would update our PER before we present it to the public council and DEQ, really focused on what phase one would be and phase two. And at that time, we would have a better idea of what that um phasing approach would look like and the full costs. At this time, we just have the um phase one scenario.
Thank you.
All right, Amy, I think you're going to let us know about how the updated survey uh went.
I am. Thank you, Mayor. Is it okay if I share my screen?
I believe so.
Okay.
Um, I want it to, I will just dig right in here. Um, when we were here a couple of weeks ago, um, the response rate was not where we wanted it to be. And at the request of council and through our work with the city, we were able to dramatically increase the response rate uh through a variety of engagement mechanisms, which got us to a statistically significant sample. Um, at about 927, either partial or full responses. 671 of those were fully complete surveys. Um, our threshold for statistical significance was right around 350. Uh, so we have a very reliable survey, given especially that we've 95% of the respondents were registered voters. Uh, again, the, the survey was open through August 13th. Uh, the purpose of the survey remained the same. Um, but the statistical significance level gives us confidence in what we've heard and where community priorities are. I will also preface this with the results uh did not change substantively. What we saw two weeks ago in terms of how the community was feeling, the community awareness, it may have shifted a bit. Um, a couple of percentage points, but our conclusions from the survey have not changed. There's still um really robust awareness of the city's need to replace the wastewater treatment facility. Um, a strong community, uh, strong level of community support for um doing so to protect public health and the Ponderay River. Um, roughly similar support for city bonds. Um, we see uh not unexpectedly and similar to the results that we saw a couple of weeks ago. Residents have a bit more, more support for an 80 million dollar phase, um, but still a a passable level of support for 130 million dollar phase because we're at that 50% plus one threshold for this kind of revenue.
Amy, sorry to interrupt. Um, if you were intended to share your screen at this time, we are not seeing that, but following.
Hmm, okay, let's try that again. Thank you. See, Holly, you're not the only one having some technology challenges tonight.
If you um, if you need me to show the
There we go.
results, let me know.
All right, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Um, would you like me to go back?
Uh, sure, you can just show the numbers real quickly.
All right. So the first one we talked about was awareness of the need, um, really overwhelming awareness of need um to do, to do the project. Uh, again, you'll hear me say this on probably all those slides, not a substantive difference from what we saw earlier, just reassurance that the results are significant and we can draw conclusions from them. 70%, actually, and 90, just over 90% um of voters are either ranked it very important or, or important um to protect public health. Um, this speaks to some of the work, I think, that the city has already done in terms of communicating the need and the consequences um of having an aging facility. This was, these are two slides, again, like the last time, we have the 80 million dollar version on the left and the 130 million dollar bond uh proposal on the right. Not unsurprisingly, people are slightly more positive uh and supportive of an 80 million dollar uh bond. Um, this is not, when considered in connection with the city's commitment to solicit bonds and to, or rather grants and to um figure out how to reduce that total bonding amount. On the next slide, for phase one only, estimated at 80 million. People are very um people want for the city to do its absolute best, and we heard this from Holly and we heard this from Kyle, to find other ways to reduce the bond amount. The bond level support goes up when knowing that the city's going to do everything it can uh to reduce the total bonding amount. Um, 55, again, this is a um passable level of support, given our 50% plus one threshold for a bond election in November. Not unsurprisingly, uh, the results are a little bit lower uh for a full 130 million dollar bond. Um, still supportive of it, uh, but the support um shifts a bit. Where are these numbers, I think, and if we look at the pink, um, almost third of that bottom right chart, is voters who are unsure about it, and that's a movable middle. Um, I think I talked about this the last time I was here. That we know that there will be voters um for whom this is a non-starter, regardless of what the city does to do cost sharing or um, or need. But we have a movable middle, even with this uh 130 full freight bond. We've got 30% almost of voters who are unsure about their level of support and can be convinced uh through education and through conversation uh to support. Not a guarantee that they will, but there's a movable middle that's a nice sizable chunk that allows us uh to move people if we need to. Again, uh, we've heard this, we'll continue to hear this. It is very important uh to respondents and voters that the city does everything that it can to pursue state and federal grants and to reduce um the total bond amount or the total debt that the city decides to undertake for this project. Again, I can't see you all very well, so if there's any questions as I'm going along, please let me know. We saw this uh very similar pie chart two weeks ago. Um, the community does not have a high level of confidence in the city's ability to manage this project responsibly. Um, I think if I were to make recommendations sort of after the election, it would be to continue to communicate what the city is doing. Um, we are engaged with the city through Election Day. Uh, but I think that if and when this bond passes, continued community engagement, continued transparency around what the city is doing. Funding options it's pursuing are critical to helping rebuild some of this perceived lack or this lack of trust in, in how the city is, is going to operate this. We saw this in the slides before. Um, cost is a big concern, uh, lack of trust. Um, developer accountability, that third element. We know that the need to um replace the wastewater treatment plant has very little to do with development and impact, but I think that we need to communicate that this is a need outside of that. Uh, and well, we will do so um in the, in the outreach and education campaign. Um, again, the fourth uh item on this list turns back into a reflective of, of the cost concerns. Um, and again, we will use these five, particularly the first four top community concerns when we are doing outreach for the community to make sure that they understand everything that the city is doing and that the city has its best interests at heart, voters' best interests at heart. So in summary, um, great awareness, um, support for um the and commitment to public health, 67% support for a phase one bond, uh, 65% support for a full bond. The support for um those two different options, when considered in conjunction with potential rate increases, which were those second two sets of slides, that support goes up substantially if they have um if they believe and understand that the city's going to do everything that it can to reduce that total loan amount. Again, 88% safe outside funding is critical. And this uh confidence level that it will manage, the city will manage the project responsibly, um, again, is an opportunity for us to communicate. Questions about the survey results before I dive into what we're going to do in phase two?
Council on questions? All right, Amy, keep going.
Um, we have about two and a half months uh to run this campaign. It's um it's fast, but I think it's, I think it's enough time to get the message out because we've got a really robust plan in place. Um, we will launch um public awareness in early September. We will have a website. There will be press coverage. We will have a website. There will be press coverage and social media. We would suggest to the city, and this was based on some feedback that we heard two weeks ago, that we send out a mailer to all residents to let them know that this is happening and then give them access to the website so they can learn more about it. We will also use a utility bill insert. Keeping in mind that absentee ballots go out in late September. We may also want to do another text-based outreach in advance of that, but either between absentee ballots and early voting. We would suggest that we do a couple of open houses and engage in community outreach wherever we can, leveraging chambers of commerce, rotary clubs, environmental groups that might have meetings, allow for either Holly or the mayor being really careful to adhere to the education and not advocacy role that you, that you will play to engage with communities where they are. We had really good success with this when we did this in the city of Coeur d'Alene in the spring. The fire chief was out all the time talking to community groups about what they were asking for, why they needed it, and inviting the community to learn more about what's happening. So we will do a series of resident touchpoints. We touched on that on the first slide a little bit. Postcard, utility bill, a really robust website that we'll set up, that will link from the city's website so that we can add things in real time, engage with the press, and then throughout the campaign, starting in early September, leveraging the city's email list. I know that was one of the ways that we were able to really grab a lot more response to the survey. And so we will use that as well to communicate about the project, about opportunities to attend an open house and community events. Also working with local press to cover the issue and make sure that voters are very, very aware of what they'll be considering in November. And with that, I would stand for any other questions.
Thank you, Amy. Council members, any questions on where we are and the plan going forward?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Howard.
Amy, just a quick question. So in some respects, I mean, you were presenting two options to the citizens of Sandpoint, an $80 million option, 130. But when we talk about the 100 and, the $80 million option, how clear did we make it? That that's only, I saw in your note, did the public fully understand that it's, the totality of the project is still going to be much greater than 80 million? It just, it may be phased over a number of years. How, I guess what I'm asking, how well did they understand the difference between an $80 million project and a $130 million project? And that 80 million is not really the totality of the project?
We presented the options in, using similar to language from what we heard from Kyle, which is that the first phase would be just the first phase, the most urgent needs taken care of to begin with. And Councilwoman, I would be happy to resend you the language that we included with the survey so that you can see what they were told. One of the benefits to using electronic versus paper-based surveys is we have an opportunity to, to share more information, and we did that. So that respondents would have as much information as we have when making the decision also, or when making their selections in terms of their support for certain items.
Because what, what we heard from Kyle was while we can't quantify what the additional phases would cost, I think it would be fair to say that it is going to be more expensive than the 130 million.
Absolutely. Unless we have a, unless we have a recession like 2010 and then contractors paying for work, right? I mean, and, and those are kind of the X factors that are really difficult to predict and what could happen. And yes, the general assumption is spot on. And I, I would assume most public would understand, hey, if we're just doing this phase now, we know that more is needed and everyone generally understands that costs increase over time, unfortunately.
Thank you.
But great, great comment.
Any other questions for Amy at this time? I hear none. Amy, thank you so much. It's a privilege to work with you and have you on our team. So thank you for the work and the insight, and shortly we will know what direction we are going.
Likewise. Thank you, Mayor.
Danielle, are you prepared to chat with us about the next steps on bond and what way we're moving on the ballot?
Sure. So I think in your packets, you should have two different versions of the election ordinance. One contemplating the $80 million project and one contemplating the $130 million project. You know, as we talked about last time, the ordinance has to be adopted and submitted to the county clerk by next Friday, August 29th, to get you on the ballot for the November election. And so if you choose to move forward with one of the ordinance, one of the forms of ordinance that we that are before you tonight, then we would take that and extract the question and the notice of election out and send those together with the executed ordinance to the county clerk. And, and from there, they take it and they handle the election. They publish the notices, et cetera. We can talk about the, there's a project description that is the same in both ordinances that we developed in consultation with Kyle and the city staff. That is kind of a, you know, both gives enough specificity about the project, I feel like, to be, to meet the statute requirements for a project, but also gives a lot of flexibility in the event that the project comes together in sort of a different fashion than is being envisioned right now. In the $80 million ordinance, we also point out that, that $80 million is not going to complete the whole project and that other sources of funds will have to be looked at, or, you know, additional funding will have to be sought. I'm happy to answer any questions or we could look, you know, I can pull up the, the question on the screen and we can kind of walk through the project description. It's kind of at your discretion, Mayor.
Thank you, Danielle. Council members, at this point, do you have any, I think, kind of all understand we've got, or you all have a decision to make, whether we go for the 80 or the 130? So I think at this point, it's pretty clear on the kind of mechanical steps that happen once we make this decision. But I guess I'd like to open it up at this point for council questions, discussion in terms of, you know, what's on your mind when you come to this decision and what, what's going to influence sort of what way you go. So unless a council member feels compelled right now to make a motion one way or the other.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Yeah, I have a question. If we were to choose the phased approach, are there any procedural hurdles in getting a future bond that might make it difficult to finance that second phase? I don't know who that question's for.
If you were to select the $80 million kind of first step approach, you, and you ended up needing additional borrowing ability for that second phase if you weren't able to finance it with grants and, or, you know, out of just your O and M accumulating over time, you would have to seek additional authority. Because the, the vote that you would take in November for $80 million, that would be the maximum that you could borrow.
Is there any, anything in state law or anything else that might prevent us from going out for additional bond authority in the future?
No, you could absolutely go seek additional bond authority in the future. I think that the tricky part is helping the public to understand and remind them why, you know, there, you need, you need additional authority for a project that in their memory is probably going to be something that they already paid for.
Right, absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Really highlight that with that phased approach, that would be something we'd really have to highlight in this education campaign that we might come back again. And so we'd have to educate now on that and then remind the public in the future as this project progresses that we might come back again. But that might be an educational challenge that we have.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
And what kind of time is that Phase One going to buy us? 10 years or are we going back to the public in five years for a second bond?
Sure, that's a good question. I think some of it is somewhat dependent on when infrastructure fails and that I can't entirely predict. I wish Devin was here right now because he would have also the stories of Band-Aids and everything he's done. With that being said, I, I think on a high level, we would anticipate probably in that 10-year timeframe as an estimate. And then we would be definitely really pushing it up against the limits there on some of these facilities. As Holly indicated, several of them are, you know, well over their useful life, beyond 70 years. So does that kind of answer your question?
It does.
Okay. Councilman Trevor, on that point, I can imagine a situation, not a pleasant one, where we maybe get $80 million, do Phase One upgrades, and then we have, what do they call it, a disruption? Is that right? An event?
It's the last event was a disruption.
At the plant, one of the older pieces blows up and we've got raw sewage flowing down the river. And people are like, we just spent $80 million. How come we have raw sewage flowing down the river? So that's in my mind, and potentially fines and penalties from the EPA for, for a disruption or an event. So in my mind, that's, that's the downside to going for 80 million.
Definitely. And one more question. What, if, if this bond measure fails, no matter what price tag we choose, what's our next option?
I believe our next option would be, we could look at judicial confirmation, and Ms. Quaid can tell us a little bit about that. I think she briefed us last time. And then I think we would just go back to the federal government and say, at these rates, $200 to flush your toilet for a single-family residence. Our residents won't or can't afford that, and we need federal assistance. Right now, we have no direct, you know, earmarks or anything like that from the federal government without giving you the full history of the Clean Water Act. When the federal government decided to create and adopt the Clean Water Act, they, which was a good thing. They prevented us in cities from putting chemicals and sewage right into rivers. But they also funded the majority of infrastructure facilities so that communities could meet those standards. And what we have now, to some degree, is a, a standard that we're required to meet. And we have no federal funding to build a plant to meet that standard. So it's a long way of saying we would go back to our senators and congressmen and anywhere we needed to go to say, please, understand that this facility is the basis for a community's economic health and environmental health, physical health, and we need help to fund it. I'm not sure with the current debt situation, our country has the ability to do that, but it's all about priorities.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Councilman Duquette.
So I guess for you folks, or whoever's doing the, the overreaching and sharing and educating to the public, should the council decide to do the full bond, please be prepared to share those negativities about and taking the phased bond, just so that they fully understand if that's the way we decide to go, that it might have made the best sense in the long run. And, and so as far as judicial confirmation and appeal for help, none of that can happen now, huh? Knowing the income level of.
No, the first step is to, we have to sort of proceed with, with our first steps available to us, which is to go to the public and ask for this level of indebtedness, the ratepayer.
I will say that if you select the $130 million option, that doesn't, you, you still can, you know, really hard charge towards getting grant funding. You don't have to borrow the funds. It's just an empowerment to borrow the funds. So that gives you assurance that you think you can get the whole project achieved, no matter how the grant funding comes together, but it certainly doesn't obligate you to borrow those funds. And that would definitely be shared as part of the information campaign. That, like, that's the worst-case scenario is that you have to borrow the entire amount. But hopefully you'll be able to get, you know, a combination of grants and low-interest loans that would enable you to, to do it for much less expensive.
Thank you. And is there time for applying for these grants?
I would imagine we would need to pursue every avenue we can.
Pretty quick.
Well, the first is the bond, and then, then we fall into sort of the timing, the congressional budget and all of those things. So I'll also say that as part of this, without trying to cloud this too much, we are on a similar path trying to pursue consideration for auxiliary treatment. And as you're all aware, but the public might not be, the, the size of this facility is in part due to our inflow and infiltration because of the characteristics of the soil that this town sits on. We have upwards of 10 million gallons a day flowing into our plant during rain on snow events. This time of the year, when it's dry, it's closer to 1.8 million gallons a day. So if we can get the state to DEQ to recognize and approve an auxiliary treatment, which basically does primary filtration and disinfection during those high-flow times, not sending it through the whole plant, we may be able to significantly downsize the scale of this plant and further reduce the cost. But we are working, that is a recognized treatment process in other states. I believe I am accurate when I say Idaho hasn't approved or recognized that. So we are currently working with DEQ and others to try to get that, that process recognized and approved for our site.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
I'm, I'm sure the answer is we don't have a, a price tag on that yet, but if that were to be approved, would that fit within that $80 million budget?
I'll kick it over to the engineer, but I think the, the question's going to be, or the answer's going to be, we don't know.
Yet.
And I'll just briefly describe where we're at. We're, this is really a concept for this idea. The next step is to negotiate our permit with DEQ. And when we're having those conversations with DEQ, then we would finalize and refine the design and understand what the full cost savings would be. It's very preliminary right now what those permit negotiations might look like to know what the cost savings would be. So it's very hard at this stage to put a number on it.
And I'd also just add, during the development of the preliminary engineering report, we denoted primary filters as a technology to consider for improving this treatment option. And then we recommended the city pilot those, the city piloted those, and we just received the report and the results of those. So we're currently evaluating the mass balance of the system to understand how much could be diverted through there and then how much could be reduced in capacity. So this is all very, very recent, in the last month and a half or so. So we're just trying to make sure we have all of our ducks in a row so that when we go to DEQ, we say, here's the technology that was used, here's the reduction, here's the impact that it would make to the system and the constituents. And this is why we want to consider this as an option to reduce the overall projects to make sure that it's feasible. So I, I think the good news is, you know, we're, we're making progress and going down that road. And so to your comment though, it could be, it could be very significant on that regard, not just a million dollars. So, and I think we'll have a better understanding for that in the future.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, and just lucky or good timing that we actually, through this, this pilot project for the preliminary engineering report, we were able to capture the data we're going to need to show how this auxiliary treatment could work. So we don't have to wait around for another year to figure it out. We, we actually captured that data, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Spiro.
Yeah, I, I think we're in a situation where we go for the full 130 and we look greedy. We go for the 80 and then we have to go back. We look like, oh, government's not capable. So it's, it's a tough call either way. 11% trust from the citizens, hey, we're North Idaho. That's a good, that's, that's pretty good for me. 11%, so I'll take that. I think I'd like to make a motion to go to the, the full 130 with a strong emphasis on the education aspect, like Councilwoman Duquette talked about, explaining the negatives if we don't get it and the positives if we do. Just a strong emphasis on education.
There's a motion. Oh, that was a tie. Tag goes to the lady. Motion by Miss Spiro, second by rule to move forward with the language for the full $130 million bond. So any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Yeah, I definitely think that there's going to be efficiency in doing the project all at once rather than in phases, and I absolutely concerned that.
And I absolutely concerned that if we get the eighty million dollar bond and then need more later, we won't get approved for a second bond. But looking at the results of that survey, I'm concerned that we won't get any money if we overshoot and go for the hundred and thirty right now. So that's, I'm I'm very much on the fence of of what to do here. And I was hoping to get a little bit more clarity out of some of these questions, but we we kind of just have to roll the dice. But that that's where my thoughts are at right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
And Councilman, I I had the same same thought you did here, especially after receiving this survey. And for many months, I thought the phased approach would probably be the way and might be more palatable. But I I think one of the things that we need to talk about is, why are we here? Right? We're here because we've kicked the can over and over and over and over again right now. We could be indebted up to forty years either way, with the eighty million or the hundred and thirty million. Let's just say that put my kids at sixty, seventy years old at that point. And at some point, we're gonna have to go back for another bond that could get us down indebted for another sixty, seventy, eighty years in total for the entire project. I think the community does understand that this is a something that needs to be taken care of. We've talked about it considerably over the years. The education piece is going to be everything for this. And understanding that this phased approach, albeit palatable, could cost us well more money than the hundred and thirty that we may spend with this bond initiative here.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Council President.
I would just like to concur with Councilman Dick. If we count the years from nineteen forty to twenty twenty five, we have eighty five years. So, hey, we're doing pretty good. We're gonna hold out for a hundred. I don't think that's appropriate. Then two things I would like to point out. I'm gonna go back to budget and point out that we're gonna spend forty thousand dollars on efficiency. I think I might rather spend that forty thousand dollars on continued communication to build confidence in the community that our government can do this right. I feel like we would actually get something of value out of that. Although that is a different issue. And then I would like to point out to the public that the equity in their homes will go down like rock bottom, swimming rock, shall we say. If we push the systems off and we have massive fails and nobody's willing to support sewage and we force it upon the citizens. So I I would hope that we can do some more blunt explanation. I appreciate the water quality approach, and ultimately, it is a water quality approach. But I think that if we direct a little bit more of our education toward the pocketbook from the stance of you may no longer have home value. I I believe the message may be come across better. Not better to the public, but give them a reality check of what we're looking at.
Thank you, Council President.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Duquette, you're recognized.
I too have issues with the price tag, being on a fixed income, single, paying that. I do think that we should share environmental issues. A lot of us live here because of our quality of water and what we have. And that is, if if we do not do the whole thing and something goes wrong in that time, we've already spending that more money too. I just think the outcome of that is totally unacceptable and hopefully a lot of people would realize that. I know it is a tough decision. I do think also that just doing a phased approach because of mixing old and new infrastructure in there, what could go wrong? And I don't think environmentally we can afford to have a an issue with our water. Though I know it's gonna be a tough, an education.
Neither council discussion before, if not, I just wanna say, council members, I want to thank those who've been on the council for years and carried this torch forward. This is a incremental and slow process. It was my number one priority, is my number one priority as mayor. And this is a big step and just thank you for your continued success and energy behind this. So with that, should be a roll call vote?
Excuse me, Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Spiro?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Excellent. I would entertain a motion. I'll now ask the clerk to read the ordinance for the hundred and thirty million dollar authorization.
An ordinance calling a special municipal revenue bond election to be held for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the city of Sandpoint, Bonner County, Idaho. The proposition of the issuance of up to one hundred and thirty million dollars negotiable wastewater revenue bonds of the city of Sandpoint, Bonner County, Idaho, to finance the design, acquisition and construction of improvements to the wastewater system and facilities of the city of Sandpoint, Bonner County, Idaho. Providing for the issuance and payment of such bonds and design and construction of said improvements and providing for reserve funding and payment of costs of issuance of the bonds.
I would entertain a motion that the ordinance passed its first reading by title only, and the summary is approved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Espiro, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Spiro?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
The ordinance, that passed, yes. The ordinance has been passed in its first reading by title only, and the summary is approved. Any need to skip the rules and do three readings?
Pass it, and we need to skip the.
What's that? Okay, you'd like me to do that as well?
I think we would need to do that in order to pass it this evening.
All right, I just gotta.
Hey, Jade.
I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings of once of the ordinance entirety be suspended. The ordinance passed second, third readings under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Rule, second by Schreiber, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Spiro?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Excellent. Excellent. Motion passes. The ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules. This will be forwarded to the Bonner County Clerk for the ballot lounge to be included in the November fourth election. Thank you, everyone. Next, I'd just like to ask for a amendment to the agenda. Moving next to item thirteen, just, we have some members of the public here who'd like to speak on that prior to number twelve. Any council members have any objection to changing the agenda order?
No.
Nope.
Hearing done. Let's move on with item thirteen, the presentation discussion of a potential amendment to City Code three two nine, open container law. Postponed from our August sixth meeting, and this will be a presentation by Director Walker.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Daniel and Amy, thank you so much. I think you're free to go. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a slideshow or anything for you. The staff report detailed the the background to this request. It actually was going to come to you initially as a request to add to our Title Three, Chapter Four, I believe, Open Container Law Ordinance. One additional city park. At present, open containers are only allowed at Memorial Field Park. Obviously, that's for the festival at Sandpoint, for Farmant Park, which is where the farmer's market takes place, the the summer sampler event, which has beer and wine. With the activation of the James Z Russell Sports Center, we've had several requests at this point for events that would like to use the community room and possibly a court for dinner, fundraising dinners, things like that. And these events really desire to be able to serve beer and wine. So Ryan and myself, Ryan Wells and myself, had planned to bring a request to amend this line of code to add the James Z Russell Sports Center for for events that at which open containers could be allowed. Simultaneously, I was approached by the chief organizing committee at the Rotary Club of Sandpoint, which we have Mariah, the president of that committee here, with a request to amend our code to allow for open containers at City Beach. And you've you've read her letters, she spoke at our last meeting. So that's the request. Now, a lot of things are happening at the same time. Also simultaneously, the Lions Club of Sandpoint approached the mayor and requested the ability to serve beer and wine at their facility at Lakeview Park. You you're probably aware, the Lions Club has a long term lease for their location at the Lakeview Park parking lot. They host private events in their building. They're currently unable to serve beer and wine at those events, and they would like to be able to do that as well. So this is really, and that was not in the staff report, because that actually, that request actually emerged after I wrote the staff report three weeks ago. So that's the, this is not an amendment we're bringing to you tonight. This is just a discussion. I know I'm looking for guidance on whether you would like to see an amendment to allow for open containers in additional city parks based on the the background here. I think you understand the request related to City Beach. The chaff is being dislocated from its about ten year home in front of the Edgewater Resort, at least for the next three years while that project takes place. They strongly desire to host chaff out of City Beach. The 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 history there is is for a long time at this point. It's a great start and finish point, great atmosphere. I believe chaff would be a great host of those events. And I I would I would encourage council to consider adding City Beach Park, perhaps with some stipulations around the season, the the timeframe, the months during which open containers could be allowed at events there, if you have concerns about this being, you know, week after week all summer long. James Z Russell Sports Center, that that one, I think we're gonna see a lot of demand for the community room and possibly for the court space. We have ordered the court surface that allows for tables to be put out for one tennis court at this point, that's gonna ship in three days. With one tennis court activated for events, we can host over two hundred people seated at events at that facility. So for things like the the Festival of Trees, things like that, which currently take place at the fairgrounds, we view the sports centers being a really attractive destination for those sorts of events. But currently, based on City Code, those events would not be allowed to have beer and wine. So that's kind of the background. I'd open it up for discussion or questions. You may have questions for the police chief. As the Parks Director, though, my my opinion is that I think these requests are reasonable. So I'll leave it there.
Council members, let's go around the horn just to get your either questions for staff or feedback and thoughts and direction for them on this. I know I have an opinion, but I'll share that after you've all gone, unless you want me to go first.
Mr. Mayor. I'll defer to.
Council President Rule.
All right, Cory, pros and cons.
And this is one of those sort of floating a balloon ways to approach things we're trying, so.
Good evening, mayor and council. Pros and cons. I got a list. Everybody knows I'm I'm not in favor of the the beach turning into an event center with alcohol. I know I sent it, the, I think the council's a whole an email. I've had some individual conversations with council for for a variety of reasons. So we'll, let's do the beach, the James Z Russell and Lions Club, because there's three different issues and concerns for the three different areas. So let's do the beach first. So you can't look at the beach and the event as a chaff one fifty event. You have to look at it as an event process for the whole. I think that becomes the challenge for the council to have to make that decision of where do we draw that line on events at our local beach moving forward. So so there's some of the concerns. So if you if you permit it today with whatever restrictions, it's gonna open it up, in my opinion, to anybody that wants to be able to put in for an event, which becomes problematic to me, which we can get into if you want to. James Z Russell Center, I completely support it. I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it should be treated somewhat as an event center. The rules change in that area because it's a city owned building, facility. The community permits could happen, they could regulate it. If you approve it, we should probably be pretty clear on what that boundary is gonna be. Is it the entire park? Is it the building? Is it adjacent to it? But those are things we could talk about. The the Lions Club is an interesting one. It's kind of like the the chaff. They do a fantastic thing for the community. They do a ton of fundraising. They put on our Fourth of July parade, they put on the fireworks. They're constantly looking for mechanisms to create funding for those events. But here comes the the caveat of alcohol again with an event. The concern that I have at Lions Club is, one, it's a facility. Two, they have a permit to to sell alcohol there, or they will have a permit to sell alcohol. So the concern would be is this could be, this could become a neighborhood bar, like the Eagles or something else. Which if that's the direction the council wanted to go, they absolutely could. However, is that really the what we want to see at the Lions Club? If the if the council was inclined to say, we think it's a fantastic idea, we wanted to do it, then then my question would be for you is how do you regulate those events? And it could be something like we've done before, where we could say you could have six events a year, four events a year, one a month in a fundraising aspect to minimize that impact through the lease agreement. And we've done that with other events. I think we did that with the beachfront property, where we minimized how many alcohol events they could have in a year. And I'm saying that, I'm trying to think how many it was, but I won't guess. So that's it. So I'm not a fan of the beach for for a laundry list of reasons, legality. I just don't think that's what our beach is for. But the the Traverse Park, James Z Russell, I think it's something that we could make work. The Lions Club is a is a challenge, but if you wanted to allow it, you could regulate it through the lease agreement with how many you could do per year to help offset some of those costs where they're trying to fundraise, they're trying to help the community, but at the same time minimize the impact on the residential neighborhood and not create a a bar over there. Very, very broad answer.
No, that's not easy to respond to. Well done. Go ahead, Councilman Spiro. Are you done, Council President Rule?
I guess if the council decided to push in the direction of the beach, what what would your be, your suggestions be for that? Would it would it be similar to what you're saying with the Lions Club in that, you know, only so many events per year? What what kind of direction would you give?
You know, and I would look at legal with some of that, and I say that in the aspect of, those are facilities and buildings. And with the lease agreement, I think we can articulate those different than we could open space for actual permitted events. So I'm not sure legally if we could limit how many the numbers. I I don't know what restrictions, so I look at them as some of those restrictions. The who is absolutely, there is no who. If you permit it, it's anybody and everybody that falls within that parameter, which is really the greatest concern, right? So you take chaff, who's a fantastic event, they do wonderful things for the community, take them out of the equation and ask yourself, is this really what we want to open up for the city of Sandpoint, for our residents at our beach? Even if you try to articulate, we'll do it in the shoulder season, so we'll do, we will, we'll do everything but July and August. June is still a busy month downtown or in outer beach. And as a as a resident, a long term resident, I, when I go with my kids and my family, we want to go swimming and playing and and have a good time. We don't want to fight with events, but that's trying to wear two hats and not get on my one soapbox too much, so. But it would be a night. So you talk about staffing, events. So you'd start doing large events. Let's say you do a music series. And we do have music series, they come through, they do Farmant Park, you open this up, they go to the beach. I'll look at Court Lane, the Kuhn and Park, there's a large music series. If you talk with law enforcement, now there's a, there's some challenging events to come with managing that. And in our current fee structure, we don't have any way to collect any fees from the police department's side for managing those events on the outside.
There were shooting at that park a couple of years ago.
They've had one during the Fourth of July, I know for sure, and they've had a couple other major incidents too.
Are you?
Well, Fonda seems like she has something to add.
Well, I think she was probably gonna say is the who you can't, if you open it up, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And I was going to suggest maybe the best restriction would be months, and then the chief said it. So, okay, thank you.
Councilman Spiro?
So, Mr. Mayor, let's say we open it up just for the month of June, which is still a busy month. Theoretically, we could have everybody who wants alcohol to be like, okay, that's the month. Um, theoretically, we could have everybody who wants alcohol to be like, okay, that's the month we're gonna do uh, an event. And so now we have a bunch of special permits, event permits for about the June and then essentially takes up. Is that essentially what you're saying?
Ab- absolutely. So you could have, um, the Chafe takes the weekend. I do in a, a music event. I take up the last week of June, um, right before July. And so now we have a, a five-day party um, down there.
But it doesn't just have to be weekends. It can be.
Oh, it could be, yeah.
Any day of the month.
Yeah. So there's, I mean, it's really. Yeah, any day and it could be as, as, as many months as you permit.
We can't discriminate. That's the concern. We can't discriminate for this one event and be opening it up for.
I get concerned with the slippery slope. Um, I look at our sign code and how hard it is to regulate our sign code. Because we can't regulate the content, but you can talk about the size and the, how big it is and where it's going and we, we debate the sign code. Constantly in what is and isn't appropriate to try to put an event in an area that we all love and cherish. And try to make it fit the Chafe, I think is the wrong way of looking at it. Looking at it as a very large hole of is, is, do we want events in large scale at the beach with alcohol? Is the big question.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Yeah, to me, this, I mean, this is a very easy discussion or decision for me in my mind. Um, if I step back and say, what, what is the purpose of City Beach? What was the purpose of the James E Russell Building and Traverse Park? It was for our community. It wasn't to go have alcohol. Those are spaces where families bring, we all have done it, right? Our kids to play on the swings, to swim at the beach, to the splash pad, whatever. And to try and intermingle the, that family atmosphere that we're trying to create there, then with the separate events that have alcohol. I think it's counter to what those spaces are meant for. And so in my mind, it's a very easy decision. Uh, no alcohol in those spaces.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Dick.
I, I have quite the unique uh, opinion on this. In full disclosure, I've helped with the uh, Chafe one fifty from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, being the start and finish of the race as well as the breakfast and the after-ride party. Uh, we were very, very capable at containing all alcohol on that spot, doing it from the hotel section of the lawn. Um, with that said, when I came down to Trinity or to the Best Western in two thousand and nine. Um, there was a concert series, Concerts on the Lawn, which you guys might remember as well too, if you've been in Sandpoint for some time. And as much as we'd like to hope that Avril would continue to allow Chafe one fifty to be able to put on their event, which raises uh, quite, what roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for our local school district and our children and has been for quite some time. Um, that may change, right? The, the reason the Concerts on the Lawn series moved away is because parking became an issue. And the hotel went away from that as well. Uh, with that said, I was also the president of Bonner General Health Foundation for many, many years, always looking for event space. And we ended up at the uh, Bonner County Fairgrounds and no shade to them, but it is putting lipstick on a pig to hold an event that's gonna potentially raise five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and I do love the idea of the James Russell Center. And lastly, I am a neighbor across the street to the Lions Club as well too. Uh, I've been there for all the different events that the museum puts on and that the Lions Club puts on. And if we want to be realistic, there's drinking that goes on at the park right now. And you probably don't hear about that because it stays pretty well encapsulated inside the park or under the picnic. I don't, I rarely see any of your officers going over there uh, to, that have any issues, right? So where I'd kind of go with this is I, I do think if we were going to allow it at City Beach. Uh, we don't, we certainly don't allow it in July or August. Uh, September, October, November, you're gonna get out there in the weather. Uh, could be May, June that we get there and maybe put some restriction on how many events can be held down there. As well as Chief, I've heard you as well too. You, you spent some great time with us uh, speaking about some of the issues with it as well too. Um, but it doesn't need to be all of City Beach. Um, we have snow-fenced Farm and Park. We've snow-fenced uh, portions of the lawn down at Trinity and the Best Western. Uh, and contained six and seven hundred people that were drinking and never had a bottle walk off, never had a DUI. Never had an alcohol-related incident where uh, to Counselor Howard's points, you could still have a public. Uh, the public using our public spaces while having that snow fence to a group of six, seven hundred people. Uh, as well. And I, I truly don't have any issues with the Lions Club, other than I, I wouldn't want it to become our local neighborhood bar. But I think you do the same thing that you would do at City Beach. You'd make it seasonal and you would limit the amount of times that you'd be able to do it.
Thank you, Councilman Dick.
Mayor.
Councilwoman, you are recognized.
Um, I support Chafe one hundred percent. I appreciate all you do. Um, I don't think people come for the beach experience. They are bike riders and they come for the routes and the um, support stations. And I volunteered at a support, support station, K R F Y, for several years. And their, their attitude is awesome, but they're bike riders. I don't think having it at the City Beach is gonna make or break the Chafe. And that's my opinion. I think the beach is for swimming, for volleyball, for basketball, for walking around, for enjoying the green space. I would not like to see um, it opened up for alcohol events. And it worries me about who could then have an, have an um, activity down there. I had emailed Mariah asking her if she has talked to Avril representatives about perhaps. Will you be allowed in the, when it's all settled to go back there? And then all we need is a nice spot in the interim for a couple of years. Um, I think, I know. I don't know, the, the parks, you know, like um, Great Northern and Centennial, those, those are nice open spaces. I don't know, yeah, but then you'd have to do the same alcohol thing. Yeah, no, no, for me, no, no alcohol functions at the beach. Um, as far as the Lions Club, if they did their little thing right there in that little spot they have. And I was a neighbor, I wouldn't be excited about having alcohol gatherings there. But I'm not a neighbor there, but I don't think that's a good place either. The Russell Building, I would almost support. Um, as a venue for, you know, dinners or activities inside. If we wanted to allow alcohol there. Um, I thought when you were talking about being on the board of the Bonner County, uh, Bonner General, you were gonna say for health reasons, we shouldn't be supporting multiple.
Fundraising.
Multi, but for a health reasons, we should not be supporting alcohol everywhere. But you didn't go there. Um. Yeah, so that would be my, my options for those places, I guess.
Councilman Trevor, did you share?
I haven't yet, no.
Didn't have you written down?
Um, yeah, I don't want to repeat what has already been said. A lot of good points have already been brought up. Um, one point that hasn't been brought up about City Beach is that the ingress and egress is pretty limited. And if there were some sort of big uh, problem there, it might be really hard to evacuate everyone. So that is another concern that I would tag on to the reasons not to allow City Beach. Um, yeah, I'm certainly open to James E Russell. I don't see any issues with that. I guess my question with that was, um, looking at the uh, the piece of paper that Director Walker handed out at the beginning of the meeting, it mentioned, I believe, um, bad actors losing their privileges to rent the facility in the future. If they were abusing your court rules.
Um, that policy is for sport use of the facility.
Right.
With regards to tennis and pickleball.
But I guess from a legal standpoint, if we can tell a local sports club that they can't rent part of the facility, can't we also tell anyone that we, they can't rent it for cause?
For an event, you're saying?
Meaning that they rent the facility and then they cause damage and so they would be uninvited to rent it again?
Or break any of the rules of the Russell facility. This one specifically says renting courts that they're not using, but I mean, I could see other.
More high level on events. I think the question is if a, a sponsor, somebody requesting event, break our rules or cause problems? Can we deny them a permit in the future?
Possibly.
Okay. And I, I guess I'm confused. So anyone can rent out Memorial Field and have alcohol there?
Through the lease program?
Yeah. Or just?
No, it's open to me. So anybody could jump through the hoop. So we've had uh, applications for weddings and other events.
Okay.
It's not just, just strictly for um, the music series. It's.
Well, to clarify, the code says through a special event.
Yeah, it's gotta go to the permit.
Weddings are not allowed to have alcohol at Memorial Field because they're not, a special event has a very specific definition or code. They have to be generally open to the public. They're, they're put on in order to attract the public. Um, Mariah at the last meeting did indicate that the the Chafe after-party is an event that's open to the public. They've always invited members who weren't, members of the public who weren't, you know, part of the Chafe ride to come celebrate. At that, a we've had, we've had several wedding requests actually at City Beach and um, Memorial Field in the last year. And they want to have a champagne toast. Can't do it at Memorial Field, even though alcohol's allowed there, because your wedding is not a special event that's put on generally to attract members of the public. It's a private event. They use a facility rental uh, process, not associated with the um, uh, special event permit process.
Community Hall, you could do it though, right?
And I think the key there is anybody could apply for this, anybody could apply. Doesn't mean they're gonna be granted the special event. It's, that's not strictly for the, the music series. So if you had a different special event that wanted to come through at Memorial Field, they could be considered for it too.
Okay, yeah.
Wedding was a bad example.
Right.
Uh, your thoughts on the Lions Club?
Lions Club, I have a couple of questions. So in order for it to turn into the neighborhood bar, would it have to change zoning and would they need a liquor license?
So right now it'd be uh, processed under a special event. Um, and I believe they've applied for a liquor.
They, if I remember right, they already have their, they don't have a liquor license. They have a beer and wine license, a beer.
Um, it.
I'm looking at Melissa because she helps me.
If the um, question I, I think you're asking, Councilor Schreiber, is do they have an alcohol license to sell any kind of alcohol? Currently, they have a State of Idaho alcohol license. I believe they also have a Bonner County now alcohol license. Um, they are awaiting their city alcohol license in order to be able to they would, to serve there. And when they have that, essentially under state, county, city law, um, they can serve on premises. Without a special event permit, without an alcohol catering permit.
Okay. And they would need that even if they were doing special events a couple of times a year?
No. So if, if they were gonna do a special event, they could actually use a catering permit. And a lot of the times, that's usually what happens. Somebody that has a, an alcohol license to sell can go off premises. They can go off premises be, with that catering permit. But they've applied, so they can do it all themselves. So they don't have to get a catering permit for somebody else. They would manage that themselves.
And that kind of gets into our lease and the terms of our lease uh, of that, that building in there.
So we could still control it through a lease?
Um, we don't, yeah, we don't think we could if they get the permit, uh, unless we prohibit it. But the zoning is another question. Um, I'm not sure what we'd do with zoning. That's a whole nother question.
You'd have to look at the allowed uses in residential single-family to determine if a private club could operate in that zone.
I don't think it could.
As a, as a commercial bar, they absolutely could not.
Right.
Yeah. So that, that the whole neighborhood bar is more of just a, an expression, like it's not really gonna be a, it can't become a neighborhood bar. But having private events in their private venue, um, Bill could probably look that up right now, whether private clubs are allowed uses in the zone. I mean, whether or not they're allowed uses, it already is a use in that zone. It's an existing non-conforming use if it's not allowed, because it is a private club that's already operating in the zone. Whether they have alcohol is not related to the zoning, to be honest. So the, the neighborhood bar was, I think, was just an expression. It's not, there's no circumstance under which it could operate as a bar.
Okay, that was my question, yeah. Um, and the community hall, how does that fit into this? You can have alcohol there?
Park, so it's not listed as a park under which um, alcohol can be served. It's managed as a recreation facility. Yeah.
Seems like.
But you can get a permit.
Yeah. Okay. So I don't know if.
No code amendment is needed to allow alcohol.
I don't know if Chafe has, or if that has the capacity for Chafe's crowds, but that's an option.
And I think what you're trying to do is come up with other solutions where Chafe can meet. So and, and the chief is she's, she's hiding back there. So if I speak out of turn, she's gonna yell at me. So historically, and everybody's, the chief has done some of their, and I use it as an after-party. Um, at different locations, even when, when we met, we talked about a lot of different locations from the Hive to Matchwood, to Community Hall, to the, to the other centers where they could move. She, and to be honest, she, she's got concerns if she, if the event starts and leaves from that event, if they have to go someplace else, would she lose some of their potential donors going to that party? Or to that activity. And so that's really some of her concerns. If they start and finish there, if they have to move to a different location, would they potentially lose some of their donors?
Basically, right.
That's one of the concerns, probably with some other ones. One of, one of many still. But there are some other locations.
You know, Chafe's identity and character has been a race that starts and, or ride that starts and finishes at City Beach for over a decade now. So their ability to continue to operate at City Beach is based on the direction you give us tonight. Um, if, if the decision is not to allow it, then they will be displaced and they might leave Sandpoint. Or I'd work with them perhaps to relocate to the James Z Russell Sports Center in Traverse Park as a start and finish point. Um, I don't have any idea if their organizing board is interested in that location. But it, the decision you make tonight will determine whether Chafe has a future in, in City. Well, the direction you give us tonight will determine whether Chafe has a home at City Beach or not in the future.
And Memorial Field would be another option for them, right? If it's open to the public.
You're a special event permit. They could base it out of Memorial Field.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Council President.
If I might suggest potentially Farm and Park, I'm sure you've already discussed it and the logistics of that and everything else. But alcohol already allowed there. I know it's not as big. Um, maybe the ride can start at the beach and finish at Farm and. Um, it's a Saturday as farmers. Yeah, but it won't finish until the farmer market is open. I can tell you. Not if you're riding a hundred and fifty miles, you won't finish.
That's what I.
It, it is a little bit complicated. And since I have the mic, all I'm gonna say is I would be in favor of J E R as long as it stays within the building. Um, and leave your drink inside if you're gonna come hang out on the porch. And then I think that just sort of keeps um, anybody from wandering into the playground, et cetera. Um, and then I also live in the same neighborhood with Justin, but I don't stare at that building. Um, but I could probably hear it if it turned into a neighborhood bar. And I would be open to them having potentially anywhere from a quarterly to one day a month where they could do fundraising and other things as the Lions Club does put on a great Fourth of July celebration for us. And if that gave them a, a, a little bit bigger bandwidth to be able to continue doing that, I don't think that um, especially if they have to contain it within that building. I've been in that building. It's not all that big on the inside. So um, and I think they're a pretty responsible group that it would not get out of hand. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, council members. Um, I think we've heard uh, good feedback. Did we get you?
Um, yeah, but it was kind of like to start off, so I.
Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, just real quick, a couple of things. Um, one, it's hard because I don't know how big of the beach they would, we'd be fencing off.
Uh, the proposal was just the grassy area in the triangle um, inside the park, nothing on the beach itself.
By the volleyball courts.
Return to the beach, but it's, it's west of the volley, or sorry, north of the volleyball courts in the grassy.
Not to interrupt, but we, once again, when we talk about this, don't think Chafe. Think event. So what the chief proposed was that, but the next event could come in and be the entire grassy area.
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure of that.
I mean.
But of course, the ordinance could articulate what part of the grassy area is.
Um, yeah, and I'm hearing um, language. I think we're conflating like it's so like, we don't want to lose donors. And I understand that. I also don't want to be strong-armed by an entity. From the, from the city council perspective, not saying they're intentionally trying to strong-arm, but Jason, that's kind of what I heard from you. Um, I, I think it's important, like, okay, so we, they may lose donors if it has to go somewhere else. And Mariah, you're more than welcome to come up. But at the same time, our, our donor's not gonna donate or go an extra mile because there's no alcohol. So I, I want to be careful that we don't conflate that it's, oh, the chase is done, it's over because the beach doesn't have alcohol. Like, that's not our choice. That's their choice. To be clear. And I just want to make that clear. So uh, they can still do the event there, even if we don't have alcohol. Am I wrong on that? Am I?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Shapiro. And I'll just share my quick thoughts. I, I think our, our park, City Beach is a sacred spot. Um, and uh, I know myself and many of my friends don't go down there anymore because it feels like a place that's not for residents to meet their friends and see their family and um, play. So I, I would be um, generally uh, the opinion that we. So I I would be um generally uh the opinion that we should do everything we can to make our parks, especially City Beach, a place for our residents and uh focus on them and not on the money. Uh, even though these organizations do do amazing things, I think our parks are places for our residents. Um, so I leave it at that, but I think staff has gotten a pretty good, I took notes and sure they got some feedback. Go ahead, Chief.
I just wouldn't mind clarifying something for the Lions Club part of it. The only thing I heard was yes and no kind of from everybody with the he wants a month, six to maybe twelve a year. I'm not sure who it was from. I guess I, because it's going to be under lease and it's going to fall under somebody else, meaning Cheryl in the back of the room. Is is council kind of okay with that concept of, or do they have a different? I know we had a a couple of no's, but if if the if the majority is leaning towards allowing um some events, is six a better number than twelve? And I'm not sure of now, it was just kind of getting some guidance.
I would be okay with the Lions if there was.
Limited uh, yeah, six or twelve.
Whatever they need.
Somewhere.
I'm going to go with Justin, he's got to look at it.
Okay, I think that gives us some guidance.
He'll be part of it.
Thank you, um, let's, I think that uh has met its purpose. Thank you, council. Let's go back to uh item twelve. Uh, next we'll revisit the proposed amendment to City Code Title Nine, Chapter One and Five, alleys and off-street parking areas facilities. At our sixth meeting, we held a closed public hearing on this matter and postponed deliberation uh to this evening's meeting. Council may now deliberate and ask questions of staff. Um, if you need a refresher, let me know, uh, or Bill can give you an update or Jason. So uh again, you're deliberating towards a motion.
I, questions, set which we're going for?
Uh, deliberation, yes, um, which can.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, you recognize.
I have some questions for Mr. Dean, please. I just, and these are kind of, again, curiosity. What is an example of shared parking? It was nine, five, three.
Sure, for the record, building city planner, thank you for the question. Um, good question. Shared parking would be, for example, a uh school next to a church or a seven eleven next to a any other business. It's just uh with two proximate businesses have an arrangement to share their facilities.
So that would be more commercial, not residential?
Uh, typically, that would be the case, but you you I could envision an apartment complex that may um have excess parking, for example, that could share with with a neighbor.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then um nine, five, six, the hard surfacing. So are you saying, or is the code going to say, if an ADU is built in an alley and they have their garage in the alley, so that's where they're entering and parking? Does that mean they would hard surface the alley that they're using? Is it just if you have a garage and that's where you come in and park?
What we tried to, another great question, what we tried to do with uh alleys was specify at what point, what would trigger the hard surfacing of an alley? And we thought a single family home, no, an ADU, no, a duplex, no, a duplex with an ADU, no. It just when you, when you exceed that threshold, now you're talking about development.
Okay.
And um at that point, you'd be triggering the surfacing of the alley.
Okay, it's not just, what is a wheel block?
When you pull into.
I'm five nine.
You've got some great questions tonight, so we'll go look at one together. When you, when you pull into a parking lot, uh, they can hit the asphalt or sometimes concrete, um, things your your tires bump into.
Oh, the curb, like the curb for a parking.
It's a little, it's a thing about this wide. It's it's not very wide, you bump into it with your car as opposed to hitting the sidewalk, yeah, in a in a parking lot.
Yeah, okay, just so the, just the.
Yep, it's a thing for your tires to rest against before.
Thank you. And I like your um nine, five, sixteen, that must have been lighting.
Uh, yeah, we.
Was something I liked.
You you had a comment regarding um wanting to make sure residential uses were not exempt from the dark sky awareness, and they're not, so.
I did.
If the council want to move this forward, we'll make sure we put that edit in.
That is not.
When you see on your agenda next, yep.
And what was nine, five, sixteen? I'll find it because I put a smiley face in my notes.
Hopefully it had to do with bicycle parking because you're making that.
I think.
Oh, there we go.
I think it must have been bicycle parking because, okay, that was just to me because I had a question about when there was in lieu for residential. It's a non-residential.
Let's take a look here.
That even if they took in lieu fees for less parking, they still had to use the parking.
That's right.
They should have done to offer that many bike parking spaces.
Right.
And I thought that was different for commercial, but then I think I read that it was the same.
There's not a lot of changes we made to the ordinance here. Um, on nine, five, sixteen for parking credits. Yeah, there's really nothing that's been changed here.
Okay.
Except for um.
I just made a smiley face, I guess I liked it.
Okay. Uh, council, any other deliberation as you weigh weigh whether or not to make a motion to approve these changes?
That's what I was going to ask because it seems like we're reopening this. And so um I wasn't sure if there was still a motion. So I would like to make a motion um to approve and then we can deliberate, so.
Who moved?
Second.
Uh, moved by Dick, second by uh Duquette to approve the proposed changes um to Title Nine, Chapter One and Five.
Mr. Mayor.
Going to be a a discussion? Motion a second through discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Thank you. Um, you know, I definitely like most of this ordinance change. Um, it's unfortunate that it also includes the expansion of the parking exemption zone because I don't support that and I don't want to beat a dead horse because I've already said why I don't support it. But just real quick, uh, number one, uh, the the primary thing that I hear from residents is the concern about impact on their neighborhoods. And East Superior um does not have, given the existing parking curb cuts, there is not the potential for enough street parking if East Superior was developed to this, the density of like First and Main. So it absolutely will push uh parking demand out into those neighborhoods. Um, and it's not like the rest of our parking exempt zone that's within a block or two from our uh city-owned lot. It's actually five blocks, which is per scale, that's the same as Dubbs, it's the same as Safeway. Um, so you're absolutely going to have people parking in those neighborhoods and affecting those uh those residents. Uh, then there's the safety concern. You have uh an off-ramp from a freeway-style highway. And uh at thirty miles per hour, people, pedestrians hit by a car have a fifty, fifty percent chance of survival. At forty miles an hour, which isn't uncommon on that stretch of road, it's eighty-five percent of people are going to die. Uh, so having people park on the road and stepping out of the driver's side of their vehicle is not appropriate on that stretch of road. Um. Plus, with you have, if you have people parking in the adjacent neighborhoods, you're going to have people crossing at First and Superior. And I don't know if any of you have crossed at that intersection recently, but it's harrowing. Um, lastly, there's only a couple properties in that exemption zone, the the expansion of that exemption zone that are developable. And uh this feels a lot like a carve-out for specific developers. And I think the the city already takes a beating, valid or not, for catering to developers. And so I don't think we should uh carve out for specific developers when it would make just as much sense to uh include the Granary District, which is only, what, two blocks from our our downtown parking lot? So I would propose approving the parking plan without the expansion of the parking exempt zone.
There's already a a motion and a second uh on the table um to adopt it as is.
We make an amendment.
Sure. I would like to, I would move to amend the motion to approve the change the ordinance with the exception of expanding the parking exemption zone.
I would second that.
Motion by uh Schreiber, second by um.
You can.
Duquette, thank you, sorry, to amend the main motion. Um.
So do we?
This will be a roll call vote or discussion?
Yeah, we should discuss that amendment part. I I forgot about that, I do agree.
I I guess I just speak to some of that as for discussion on this. Um, and I'm happy to share several studies, Councilman Trevor. Uh, on-street parking has been shown to actually calm traffic and reduce uh the uh chances of fatalities and slows traffic down. Um, uh, so on Superior, I don't think that would be um negative or detrimental to the public health if we had on-street parking there. Uh, and then, you know, I just point out that as contemplated that expansion zone, uh, I know the property that you're probably thinking of. But uh this would apply to all those zones. So let's say the prosecutor's office sells and wants to turn into a restaurant. Uh, without this expansion, um, they would have to provide parking, off-street parking to convert an existing building with a smaller parking lot into um a restaurant because that's going to uh trigger, um, it's the parking requirements are based on how many seats and use. So powerhouse, many of those other buildings in there could benefit from this flexibility. And it doesn't, doesn't prohibit the developer from saying, my development is going to need some onsite parking, I'm going to build it. It just gives them the opportunity to determine how much parking they need, not having some nineteen seventies manual that's totally um out of date and um not based on local conditions dictating how much parking they have to provide. Any other discussion on this amendment?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about what you said. Am I able to talk a second time?
I think you can, yeah.
Where on the street in Superior are you thinking?
Well, presently, that is one of the widest right-of-ways in the city of Sandpoint, and it has been given back to us. So we would have the ability to rebuild that street and put on-street parking on it.
That would be better than the neighborhoods overflowing into the neighborhoods.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
For the record, I don't necessarily have a problem with the properties owned by the county being included in that that expansion of the exemption zone. But I would also note that the current exemption zone, as it's drawn, even includes a set, a block of single family. So I think it needs to be rethought before we move ahead with that.
Mr. Mayor, um, if I might, may just expand briefly. Um, the Councilman Schreiber mentioned that the only developable pro, there's only one developed property in that zone. Um, some of the existing businesses, Second Avenue Pizza, the Hydra Steakhouse, Sandpoint Law, um, Sandpoint Eye Care. These are all properties that are likely to see redevelopment in the future. At that time, if Hydra Steakhouse right now came in for a building permit, they'd be required to add parking that they do not have space to add because they are not conforming to our existing parking requirements in the zone that they are in. So there are probably a dozen or two dozen locally owned businesses in that area that are prohibited from any sort of future expansion because of the parking requirements that exist today. The the proposal now is to bring them into the same zone that the rest of downtown businesses take advantage of right now. Businesses like that we've seen recently, like The Forge, like Burn Cloud, like any new restaurant that's come to town that has not been required to provide off-street parking. There are plenty of restaurants in this proposed expansion zone that will be required to provide off-street parking when, if or when they plan to do any sort of building improvement or expansion.
Mr. Mayor, may I request of Mr. Welk or or Bill, sorry, Mr. Dean um, to pull up that map, just so the public can kind of be aware of what we're talking about?
Uh, continue your deliberations because I have to join the Zoom meeting first, sorry. Then I will.
Mayor, I'll just add for, maybe it's helpful, maybe it's not. Um, this is exactly what we should be talking about. In in nineteen twenty-five, that the population of Sandpoint was three thousand people and downtown was coming into its own. Fast forward a hundred years, today, we're just shy of ten thousand. Stands to reason that your downtown is going to change and and um experience uh newness with a span of a hundred years.
And uh, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Council.
Uh, Mr. Dean, just to to clarify, so the expanded uh zone that we're talking about, and I know Jason's pulling up, is expanded non-residential, so it only would apply to commercial? Is that how I read?
This is a boundary that applies to the the image that you see on the screen right here. We can pull up a zoning map that shows you what the what the zone districts are that are implicated here. You're correct, under, under the other changes in this ordinance, um, residential now have to apply either pay an in lieu or provide some onsite. That's right. Okay, but let's pull up a zoning map just so you can have some clarity on that. Um, non-residential would not be required.
Right, that's the thing.
But it is a reduced number of parking spots per residential unit.
You can, you can see here that the the purple area east of Sixth Avenue, west of First Avenue, south of Poplar and north of Lake Street is all in our current parking exempt zone. The proposal now is to expand this town to the mixed-use residential and the commercial areas um down here that do not have the same advantages as businesses in the parking exempt zone. And of course, the the vision here is as we expand downtown revitalization and take what used to be an ITD right-of-way, a three-lane highway, and turn it back into a downtown city street, the pattern of development that this ordinance proposes is one that reflects downtown development, not suburban type sprawl where parking lots are required for every restaurant and for every small business.
To be, to be fair, just to add, th- this is, this is a change. This is a big change and it's, and it should be deliberating. We should be thinking about the impacts to the neighborhood. Um, but it also shouldn't be just looked at as the, as the uh, you know, expanding the exemption. You have to also consider we have the shared parking. Um, and the the fact of the matter is that um even though the city may not be requiring parking, uh, which is a way to incentivize development and reuse and appropriate use of these properties in this setting, um, the private property owners have the right to propose parking if that makes sense to them. It's just us not imposing that on the land.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Council.
If I may call for the vote on an amendment portion.
That is your privilege, so it'll be a roll call vote?
This is on, on the amendment, not on the motion.
The expansion.
Okay.
This is to reduce and take away the expanded area. Um, I'll let the clerk go.
Counselor Spiro?
No.
Counselor Howard?
No.
Counselor Dick?
No.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
No.
So we're back to the main motion, um, which is to approve the proposed amendments uh to Title, oh geez, we've got the title uh Nine, Chapters One and Five. Any more deliberation? Not, I'll call for a vote?
Counselor Spiro?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
No.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Excellent, um, staff will bring the ordinance to council's next regular meeting for official adoption to make these changes. I've jumped around a little bit, but I believe that is uh the end of our business, except for the final item agenda. I'll entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section seventy-four, two oh six, one F. For the purpose of communicating, leave council to discuss the legal ramifications and legal opinions impending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but immediately likely to be lit uh litigated. I need a motion, a second.
Still move.
Okay.
Moved by Rule, seconded by Spiro, this will be a roll call vote?
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Spiro?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask everyone not participating in the session to please exit the room and the meeting recording. And thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. Um, we will, yeah, we'll be here.